Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and opening remarks by Councilmember Hug. Please be seated. Mayor, welcome. It's always good to see you. Well, along with being National Cheesecake Day, which in my book is every day, it's also National Whistleblower Day. National Whistleblower Day commemorates the day our founding fathers recognized the need to protect those who report corruption when they see it. The day reminds us to honor and support the people who speak up about fraud, abuse, or waste. Interestingly enough, it was unanimous resolution was enacted by the Continental Congress on July 30th, 1778, by honoring Lieutenant Richard Marvin Midshipman Samuel Shaw and eight other sailors who reported abuse against British prisoners by Commodore Hopkins. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall of Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here, and we want to welcome some special guests here in a minute. First, I will say make sure you have your cellphones turned to vibrate, or at least turn them, or maybe even turn them off. If you have a difficult time hearing the proceedings today, you may request a listening device with our meeting clerk here to my left, and there's also a closed captioning screen in the back of the room if you need it. With that, councilmembers, without objection, we're going to move up number 43 on our agenda and recognize Mayor Stoddart and recognize our delegation here from Carentini that approves an item with a sister-city agreement between our two cities. And then we'd be honored to hear from Mayor Stefio and their city council president, or anyone else who'd like to provide some remarks today. So Mayor Stoddart, the floor is yours.
Well, good afternoon, President Festerson and city council members. It is an honor -- do I need to say my address today?
I think you're okay.
Okay. All right, good. It's really an honor today to welcome Carentini Mayor Giuseppe Stefio and his delegation back to Omaha and into the legislative chamber today. Mayor Stefio, thank you for being here today. Thank you. I just told him that my Italian is not any better than it was in 2021, and he told me my English is not any better either, so we're kind of on the same level here. But in 2021, Mayor Stefio and I signed a friendship agreement, creating opportunities for cultural, educational, and business partnerships and exchanges. In 2022, I led an Omaha delegation to Carentini, Sicily, where we met with leaders in government and education to further pursue a sister-city designation. We are now ready to finalize the agreement at a ceremony tomorrow afternoon celebrating our global friendship. Carentini and Omaha have a century-old ties in history of family, faith, culture, and tradition. The first Carentini immigrants arrived in Omaha over 100 years ago to work on the railroad, the new railroad at that time. They brought a strong work ethic, religious faith, dedication to family, and a spirit of community to their homes in Omaha, traits still evident today. For several years, descendants of those first immigrants and the Omaha Sister City Association have worked to finalize our sister-city agreement. So thank you to Sister City's board and their volunteers. It is my privilege to serve as the honorary chair of the Omaha Sister City Association and recommend today approval of this resolution. Omaha is very proud of our strong ties to Carentini, and we look forward to many, many years of new friends and new friendships. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there other proponents that want to speak, or maybe someone from the delegation? Steve.
I'm Steve Yurtis, president of Omaha Sister City Association, and I too urge the council to support this resolution. You may ask, well, why do we need a resolution of sisterhood when we already have such a strong tradition of connections between the Italians who settled in Omaha and Carentini? Well, from the Sister City's perspective, this is an opportunity to expand that and share the wonderful Italian culture that those of us who are not Italian can experience. And similarly, amazingly, there are some people in Carentini who don't have any descendants here in Omaha, and so we'd like to invite them here as well. So it is a wonderful fit for the city of Omaha, and I urge you to support it. I would also like, if I could, to have the delegation from Carentini, including the president of their city council, to please stand.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak to number 43?
Grazie. Grazie, Sindaca Stoddart. Grazie a questo Parlamento cittadino di una delle città più importanti degli Stati Uniti d'America. Grazie alla città di Omaha. Oggi per la mia città, per la mia piccola città viene scritta una pagina storica. Il ricordo di molti miei concittadini che si trasferirono dalla mia città alla fine del 1800 in questa città e hanno trovato una seconda loro casa. Oggi voi state prendendo omaggio ai sacrifici e alla memoria di colori quali sono venuti qua ad Omaha per cercare una vita migliore. E voi, insieme alla vostra città, alla vostra comunità, avete reso questo sogno possibile dai miei concittadini. Quindi grazie ancora.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone to make this dream come true since our people from Carentini, they came here at the end of the 1800 to build a new dream and a new life in here. And now we can claim it, and it has been possible because you allow us to be here now and write it down and make the history. So today for us is a day to make, a way to make history in here. And it's such an important thing for all of us back in Italy, and we cannot say anything more than thank you from the deep of our hearts.
Grazie. In un momento in cui spesso nel mondo vengono costruiti dei muri, oggi voi invece insieme a noi abbiamo costruito un ponte, un ponte che unirà questa comunità di Omaha, l'altra parte del mondo dove sta Carentini. E saprei una cosa, io avrò l'onore e il piacere di ricevere ancora una volta la Sindaca Stoddart, e quando verrà a Carentini avrò l'onore di conferirgli la cittadinanza onoraria, perché non lo posso fare con tutti i cittadini di Omaha, ma nel segno in modo simbolico significa che ogni singolo cittadino di Omaha possa sentirsi anche il cittadino di Carentini. Grazie ancora di vero cuore.
So we are in an age while we are always building walls, but now we are going to build a bridge, a bridge within two populations, Sicily and Omaha in Nebraska. For us here, Omaha is one of the most important cities in the United States, and we are always welcome you all, and you are always welcome to come. And you're going to be an honorary resident in Sicily. And this, we could do, in Carentini, we could do this for all of you, but of course we can only do with you, with one. You are welcome anytime you want to come back. It's going to be a pleasure.
And I want to come back.
Grazie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other proponents that want to speak to number 43?
Good afternoon. My name is Sherry Kanger, and I am a Ruma. I am the great, great granddaughter of Lucia Shishilo, and she was somebody who came from Carentini for a better life here in Omaha. So I know how important this relationship is from a historical standpoint and from a familiary relationship as well. I actually live at my grandfather's house at 2525 South 46th Avenue, and a lot of the relationships that have been ongoing for over 100 years now are still carrying on, and the next generation needs to know the stories of our ancestors. So I've been involved in projects to help promote Italian heritage here in Omaha and preserve the Italian legacy that first came to Omaha in the early 1900s. So I just wanted to tell you how important this is to a number of people worldwide, that this resolution be passed, and Carentini and Omaha remain a tightly connected community well into the future.
Well said. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I'll have to make sure you're involved in the signing ceremony. Any other proponents on this item? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, and before we approve this, seven to nothing. I want to say we look forward to participating in your events this week with the signing ceremony and the dinner, and look forward to being a great partner with your city. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay. Yeah, wait a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for the dandelion located at 15475 Ruggles Street, Suite 108.
Councilmembers, this item was postponed for more time last, at our last meeting. I'll now take proponents, number six.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Houghton at 2804 South 37th Ave. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Corrigan Enterprises LLC, doing business as the dandelion. My client would like to apologize to the council with regard to the mix-up and hope that they didn't cause any inconvenience for the members of the council. They had an old email that they were using. This new concept bar will be located at 15475 Ruggles Street, in the space that was formerly retro. We rewind. The concept will change from a nightclub to a lounge catering to an adult upscale patron. The hours of operation will be noon to midnight, Monday through Thursday, noon to 2:00 a.m. Friday and Saturday, and noon to 10:00 p.m. on Sundays. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents on number six? Seeing none, or seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Move the approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item seven, to consider a class C liquor license for board and brush located at 6016 Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. We have the proponent by Zoom. Ms. Price will get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Good afternoon, President Festerson and members of the city council. My name is Miranda Price. I am looking to get a liquor license at 6016 Maple Street for a board and brush creative studio. Formerly was the Overflow Lounge that has been closed for quite a few years. Our studio is going to be doing somewhat of a paint and sip, except it's going to be with boards where people can DIY their own projects. The liquor license is just requirement from the franchise, and we will just be serving just to the people attending the classes. The hours we're going to be doing the classes will, we're going to start with just Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, as much of a weekend thing as can be, and see where it goes from there. That's everything. Any questions from anyone?
Thank you. So it is a franchise, right? Is that what you're speaking to?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
First one in Omaha, right?
Correct. First one in Nebraska.
All right. Well, we're going to welcome you to Benson. I think it'll be a nice addition there, next, not too far down from the community center, right?
Correct. Yep. And I've been on the neighborhood board, Benson Neighborhood Association Board for four years, and I know that we're always excited to see new businesses coming to Benson, so I'm excited to be part of it on the other side.
Yeah, great. I was going to recommend you get involved with the Business Improvement District there and the Creative District, but it sounds like you are.
Yes, yes.
All right, excellent. Are there any other proponents on number seven? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a class C liquor license for Champagne Lanes and Ghost Donkey located at 910-920 Harney Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please. I think we have Ms. O'Neill by Zoom. Hello.
So yes, we're looking to seek a liquor license for Champagne Lanes, Ghost Donkey. It's a flagship restaurant group, concept originating in Arizona, and we would like to bring one to Omaha, Nebraska, located in, across from the Old Market.
Thank you. And Rebecca, this is your address for the record?
1301 Jones Street is my current address, and then Ethan Farnham is the address for the concept.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I was actually contacted by one of the residents in the building, in your building, that lives there, and there was a whole, apparently there's a whole group of residents there that can't wait for you to open, and they called and asked me if you knew what, when your opening date would be, if I could ask that question today and relay that back.
Absolutely. We're so excited to open. We're shooting for the second or third week of September. My whole team did just train out in Arizona, and we're bringing a bunch of like really fun ideas from that area over, so we're very much looking forward to catering to our community.
Well, if you want to do a little test opening, there's a bunch of residents that live in the building that I'm sure would volunteer to do it for you before you open, so.
I think we would really enjoy that.
Contact me if you want. I can, they're a bunch of fun people, and they said, please vote for it, and they literally can't wait for it to open. So I think you've got, you've got customers waiting already.
Excited to hear. Thank you so much.
Nothing further.
No further lights. Is there a motion? And just a reminder, this requires a rule seven. Yep, yep. Also, okay, motion and a second to approve and waive rule seven. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item nine, to consider an addition liquor license application for Scissors &amp; Scotch to add an indoor area to their location at 2835 South 170th Plaza, Suite 212.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please. Do we have it, but then by Zoom as well?
Yeah.
Okay, Dylan, try that.
Good afternoon, Dylan Pachasa, 18315 Grant Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022. Just looking to add a 10 by 20 addition to our current liquor license bar area.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? There's a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Price, how are you today? Can you hear me?
Are you talking, yeah, Mr. Pachasa, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, yeah, I misread your name there on the screen. How are you?
I'm doing good. How about you?
Good. Can you give me a day in the life of what your business looks like and what you'll be doing there and your hours of operation?
Yes, so Scissors &amp; Scotch is the name of the business. We are a men's grooming place, so we have 16 styling chairs. I have barbers, I have cosmetologists, and we just give the full grooming experience to men. We have different men haircuts, beard trims, facial hair sculpts, and then every gentleman that comes in and gets a haircut can also go and get a free drink in our bar. And our hours are, we're open every day of the week at my legacy location, and the bar is completely separate than the haircut area due to the barber board expectations. So we just, we just moved our front desk and knocked out a wall and then just expanded just a little bit in our bar area to make it, make it more convenient for people that, that come in there.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you. There is a motion and a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item 10, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Crescent Moon Ale House located at 3578 Farnham Street for an outdoor event on September 27th and 28th from noon to midnight with music ending at midnight each night.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Candace Gladwin, 1504 North 113th Plaza, Omaha 68154. And I'm the event coordinator there. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson de Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street, and the City Council of Omaha, Nebraska. We'd like to share some thoughts about all this liquor that's been approved today for these liquor licenses. These young folks here want to go study in the African continent and bring some gold back so we can buy the international, our First National Bank down there. Do you recommend, since my generation, we studied under the Cherokee and Sam Houston, so smoking or liquor, which one you think is more concerned, more important to the young folks? To get them some money so they can go to South Africa or West Africa or East Africa, and then we're going to buy that First National Bank building down there next to on the Hilton Hotel?
All right, Donnie, keep your remarks to this liquor license at the Crescent Ale Moon House, right?
Yeah, but every week I come here, I see all these liquor licenses being passed. I'm saying to myself, when they going to get around to the medical marijuana?
Any other opponents to number 10? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Mr. President, Candace, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for coming down, and I apologize I didn't get ahold of you before today, but this is, I think, the 23rd Annual.
Correct.
Oktoberfest.
Correct.
And I've enjoyed it the last several years that I've gone, and your music's going to go till midnight, correct?
Correct.
And how many bands you got playing?
We have just one on Friday, Barry Boyce, and then Saturday, Polka Express in the afternoon, and then Barry Boyce rounds it out again.
And if, if the Fighting Irish Notre Dame or the Huskers are playing that night, you'll have TVs in the tents in the back, I'm guessing?
We usually have a projection screen underneath the tent somewhere, and then obviously in all the bars inside.
Yeah, you guys are pretty, you run a great event, and I've enjoyed going to that, and I'll enjoy going to it again this year. I'll be glad to make the motion. This is in Blackstone, in the heart of my district, in the Cottonwood. People drive up there, they can see the progress that is going on every day. So I wish you the best of luck, and I'll look forward to seeing you at the end of September, and I'm glad to make a motion for this today. Thanks.
Thank you.
There's a motion to approve in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Boyd's Edition Replat 5 located at 3030 Sprague Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 7096 Benny Street from R4 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial of rezoning to R6 and approval of rezoning to R5.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Matt Bates, 7210 Blondo Street. It's, this, this home is right above, right north of 72nd and Maple by a bunch of commercial spots, and it's a single-family home that can be converted to a duplex. We want to do a triplex, but just a duplex now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents on number 12? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located at 7059 Dodge Street from GC District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Carson, on behalf of TFL Inc., 4611 South 96th Street in Omaha. This matter comes up as discussions between TFL for the development of the southeast corner of 72nd Dodge Street, and in conjunction with recommendation of the City Planning Department, we're going, we've applied to downs on the property from general commercial to community curial. The ACI overlay will remain intact. Believe it's a win for the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson de Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I realize most of you councilmen was in elementary school when they had the debate here downtown about the Hilton and changing that street from 16th and blocking it. Well, that was a golden opportunity for us now, because we're prepared to buy the Hilton Hotel and the First National Bank.
Donnie, this is a rezoning at 70th and 72nd Dodge.
Yeah, they had to rezon that, because you was too young then when they rezoned the 16th Street. I understand that, but that's okay. We'll bring you up to code.
Keep your remarks to this case, please, or else you're off topic.
Okay.
All right. Any other opponents to number 13?
Larry Shore, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. First of all, Mr. Festerson, I'm opposed to the way you treat Donnie differently than you treat me. Enough of that. But didn't we hear something about this item two weeks ago, was it, when we had the most people in this chambers that I've ever seen opposing this development? Is this the same one that involves the Mega Saber? When I went onto the website, it looks to me like it is, but you just say nothing on the website currently about that. I don't know where you set with that, whether you've scrapped that idea and sent them completely down to the state for their liquor license or not. I find it strange that you didn't mention it on today's agenda item. But I've driven through that area a couple of times. Of course, it is related to, very closely related to Mr. Morgan's Real Estate Company, and it looks like you've already started tearing up the street, but we haven't had a vote on it yet. And that seems to be the typical run of affairs in this council with development. I think there's a lot of citizens there that are worried about a couple of really nice homes that are probably going to get taken. And so I'd like a little more discussion on this and whether it is still related to the Mega Saber or not, and based on those citizens' opposition last two weeks ago, I think. There must have been at least 20 citizens, and you broke the rules there, because you let most every one of them run on and on and on. Quite often, you cut me off by this time, if not earlier. And that, again, is different treatment of different people for different reasons. So I'd like to know why you let so many people go way past their time two weeks ago. Thank you.
Any other opponents to number 13? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Fansall, a couple of questions for you, please.
Yep, Dave Fansall, City Planning.
Dave, change in this is proposed today from GC to CC.
Dave, change in this, uh, is proposed today from G C to C C. Just to be crystal clear, that would have no impact whatsoever on MegaSaver at seventy fifty-nine Dodge Street moving forward, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, and also, um, is this a benefit to the city to switch this from G C to C C? And if it is, why?
Um, yeah, so I'd say it's a more of a, probably a benefit to the surrounding neighborhood. G C zoning is a little more intense than C C zoning, and so the downzoning of this, um, will help. It's, it's more, the uses that are allowed in the C C Community Commercial Zoning District are more of the, um, businesses that seem to be in the neighborhood. So, by downzoning this, if MegaSaver for some reason doesn't happen, or someday leaves that site, then the site would be zoned C C for uses that are more typical of that neighborhood.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thanks. I agree with that analysis. I, I was not supportive, and I am not supportive of this use, um, at this intersection for the reasons we discussed, um, last week, previous weeks about the liquor license when it came, and, and actually was not recommended to be approved, four to three. But that is a separate item from this rezoning that must now go to the State Liquor Commission that has not been scheduled yet. We believe that'll be sometime in September for disposition by, ultimate disposition by the State Liquor Commission. But what's before us today is the rezoning, and I agree with Mr. Bagley's and Mr. Fansall's analysis there that even though I don't support this use, it is of benefit to approve this rezoning, to downzone this property. In the instance, a liquor license, liquor license is not approved, um, there is still benefit to doing that. If this rezoning was not approved, it doesn't prevent that from happening either. So, um, that's the, that's the situation we're in, even though I begrudgingly will support this rezoning today. It's not because I've had a change of heart, I still don't support the use at this, at this location, uh, but that's the circumstance we find ourselves in. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'd just like to concur with you, I mean, Claire, I don't like the use here either, but this city council, that's not our job. We, as, as long as it fits in the zoning, in the current zoning, uh, they can build the MegaSaver. So, whether we vote yes or no today, the MegaSaver can be built. We, we don't control what goes in there as long as it complies with the current zoning. I do support at least downzoning, um, this property to a C C because it'll prevent maybe some other uses that we wouldn't like in the, in the future. So, that's why I'm supporting this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to share my concerns that I had last week, they have not changed. But, the issue in front of us today is a different matter, um, so I'm just bringing forth or bringing to the attention of this body of what my position is before voting, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion?
Move the approval.
There's a motion in a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item fourteen, an ordinance to rezone property located at six zero one four South Twenty-sixth Street from H I District to R four District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number fourteen is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item fifteen, an ordinance to rezone property located at two six zero three Y Street and two six one five Y Street from H I District to R four District, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number fifteen is today, proponents please.
My name is Jesus Gomez, I'd like to resell from a heavy industry to a single-family home. You know, need your permission.
And Jesus, your address, just for the record?
Yeah, twelve twenty-six oh three, Y Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number fifteen? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item sixteen, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a P U D overlay district located east of Eightieth and Reed Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number sixteen is today, proponents please.
Hi, my name is Christina Spengenberg, uh, twenty-two oh four North one hundred eighty-eighth Avenue in Elkhorn. Um, we are just asking for a major amendment to the P U D to construct, uh, seven single-family attached, uh, buildings for a total of fourteen units.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents on number sixteen? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item seventeen and eighteen can be considered together for property located southwest of Twenty-second Street and Poppleton Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seventeen, an ordinance to approve a P U R overlay district. Item eighteen, an ordinance to rescind the P K overlay districts.
Public hearing and vote on number seventeen and eighteen are today, proponents please.
Uh, Rob Woodling, Foundation's Development, um, this will be part of, I'm sorry, one eight eight six South one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, this will be part of a, a eight-unit, uh, affordable housing project for disabled seniors, uh, on, right around Twenty-second and Poppleton. Uh, we've been fortunate enough to secure some philanthropic support, as well as some ARPA funding through the state of Nebraska to build these units. Look forward to, uh, answering any questions you may have, thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Uh, good afternoon, City Council of Omaha, Nebraska, uh, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson de Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. You know, Mr. Festerson, I was trying to figure something out here. On this, when I was a kid, young guy, we see signs that says, eight ton, four tons, not allowed.
Donnie, it's gotta be the Twenty-second and Poppleton.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to figure out this.
A parking overlap, right?
Yeah. The tonnage of this, who gonna pay for if the six ton comes into an area that's don't supposed to come? Because we have signs that says, if you have six tons, you can't come in this area. And I don't see that in all these development. So if a truck, uh, bringing big, uh, heavy equipment in, and it's eight ton, and tear up the street, who's supposed to pay for that?
All right. Any other opponents to these items? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President, Rob, good afternoon, good to see you again.
You, too.
Nice to run into you at Stinson's Saturday night, I told you I was really gonna grill you today, but.
I thought you said it was gonna be softball right down the middle.
Yeah, I know, I, I kinda lied to you a little bit.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I, I'm, um, glad to be supportive of this, and, um, you, do you own the apartments at the old Saint Anne's location there, just to the west of this?
I do.
And how many units is that?
That's twenty-three.
And those are affordable as well?
Correct, uh, eighteen are affordable, five are market rate.
Okay, I, I really want to thank you for the investments and the time that you're making, and as a kid going down to Saint Anne's and all the ballgames and spaghetti dinners in neighborhoods age, and the investment that you're making in Columbus Park for disabled seniors here in the lot that's just been sitting there. Um, it's really a great investment, and I'm glad to support this, and I guess I'll let you off the hook.
Thank you.
I lied to you a little bit, but thanks for coming down, and thanks for being at Stinson's and Sunny's on Saturday night, and all the work you do in the community with, I think you work with Front Porch on this as well, did you not?
Correct.
Okay, well, this is a great investment in the revibration of Columbus Park, and this is a, a big part of it, so I'll be glad to make a motion to support this today. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, there is a motion in a second to approve, no further lights, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nineteen, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow large group living in the R two District located at eight five zero four Douglas Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nineteen is today, proponents please.
Hi, I'm Erin Render, one eight five one seven Hampton Drive, Omaha six eight one three six. And I am here representing Legato Real Estate and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item twenty, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow large group living in the R two District located at one zero two one four Elm Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, be it communication and opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty is today, proponents please.
Hi, Kelsey Slobodsky, one oh six two four South one hundred ninety-first Street, Omaha six eight one three six, owner of the real estate and business.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second to approve, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items twenty-one through thirty-six were held on July twenty-third. I don't see any further lights, is there a motion? There's a motion in a second to approve. Before I call, roll council members, I'll just, um, have short remarks on number thirty-five. Uh, we discussed the, the bond issues, um, last week in public hearing. On this particular one, I asked some follow-up questions that day that I, I didn't think were entirely clear during the public hearing, but I, I did have a follow-up meeting with, uh, both the Finance and Public Works Departments, um, that I think confirmed, uh, what I was looking for, which is, these are seventy-two million dollars worth in bond, uh, proceeds that would be authorized to do additional road construction throughout the city. And my question at the time was, is this sufficient to continue, uh, enhance commitment to our road construction needs as approved by voters in, in two thousand and twenty? As you recall, voters approved two hundred million, uh, at that election. And then, in two thousand and twenty-two, they also approved a hundred and twenty million dollars worth of bonds. And that's why adding these, these bonds in two thousand and twenty-four for seventy-two million does in fact add up to adding another two hundred million dollar, two hundred million dollars approximately to our street needs over that timeframe. So, um, we have, in fact, um, followed through with our commitment to add about forty million dollars worth of work per year from that initial bond issued twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four, as long as we continue that work this year. And I think it's up to us to make sure that does in fact occur. And then, should voters approve this, uh, in November, this additional seventy-two million, it will allow an additional forty million per year approximately from years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. So, um, that's why I support this today, I think it's important we continue to prioritize our streets and our roads, uh, which we all know need it badly, and will get us more towards that ultimate goal of about seventy to seventy-five million dollars per year being spent, uh, to address those needs and improve our road system throughout the city. No further lights, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Council members, number forty-three was already taken off and addressed in our meeting today. We've had a request to remove number forty-four from the consent agenda. So first, we have the public hearings on agenda items number thirty-nine through forty-two. If you wish to address these, the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items numbers thirty-nine through forty-two. Thirty-seven through forty-two, I'm sorry. Thirty-seven through forty-two. Seeing none, public hearings are closed, Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Austin, I just had a quick question, I was gonna try to catch you at pre-council, but if you wouldn't mind coming up. Had a question on thirty-eight, which is the, uh, the street scan in Street Logix software. Is that, is that, uh, an enhancement of Pazer, does it work with Pazer, or is it not even affiliated with what Pazer does?
It's a good, Austin Rouse with Public Works, it's a good question, so it's a, it's an assessment tool, um, uses, uses an A I through camera imagery to, to, to return pavement assessments for us. And so, with, you know, one of the, one of the reasons why we've used the Pazer system in the past is because it's a visual where I can go out and rate a street a four, and you can go out and rate it a five, and we, we're only gonna be one-off. Using an A I with an, an algorithm to run that, we're probably gonna switch mostly away from Pazer, except in those areas where we have some kind of a policy or, uh, an ordinance that, that calls out for Pazer, which obviously is part of our substandard street program, but we'll probably go to a P C I or a Pavement Condition Index, which is industry standard.
Okay, and so Pazer kinda gets phased out over time, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Austin. So how frequently will this scanning, uh, take place?
Yeah, so there's an initial scan that the company who provides the software will do, um, as far as follow-up scans, we will, you know, the, one of the, one of the reasons why we like this particular software is they're, they call themselves data agnostic. They don't care if they scan it or if we bring data from another scan, whether it's cameras in our trucks or, or any other kind of imaging system that we bring to, to the table. So, we have the option to run as frequently as we want. Uh, the, the company will do an initial scan for us and feed that information directly into the system that gives us the, the pavement management system. But, following that, we can, we can run it as frequently as we want. Currently, we're, we're, uh, doing pavement assessments on arterial and collector streets annually, and we're on about a three-year cycle for local streets.
So, uh, someone could call in and request that this be ran, and they could expect what type of turnaround?
Yeah, anytime somebody wants, you know, if, if somebody wanted a one-off condition assessment of their street, we could do that within a couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, there's no further lights, is there a motion on thirty-seven through forty-two?
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item forty-four, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with the University of Nebraska to provide the city's five-year poverty elimination action plan.
Public hearing on number forty-four is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Council President Festerson, members of the city council. Kaylin DeHilius, Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department for the City of Omaha, here in support of this resolution and ask you to, um, align with this contract with the University of Nebraska at Omaha. As you all are likely aware, uh, Omaha has to come up with a plan to eliminate poverty uh, as a result of the passing of L B eight forty in the legislature. And so, our path forward, our proposed path forward is through partnership with U N O. We believe this is the right choice with U N O as a public institution that's very capable of gathering the data necessary to conduct a needs assessment, both from hard data and numbers that U N O already has access to, and from the insight of community members. Something pretty special about the University of Nebraska Omaha is that they've been awarded the president's Higher Education Community Service Honor Roll, or been placed on that honor roll for seven consecutive years. It's the highest federal recognition a school can receive for civic engagement. And so, just wanna highlight that because I understand there's a need for a lot of community engagement as the City of Omaha embarks upon this plan. And I believe that U N O will balance that requirement with the data requirements to accomplish what needs to be accomplished. Specifically, we're gonna partner with the Center for Justice Research, Dr. Ryan Spawn, and a couple of others from his team. They are within the College of Public Affairs and Community Service, Service at U N O. And so, our preliminary plan is articulated throughout the contract, but essentially, um, the first steps are to start gathering data to conduct the needs assessment and a report of where we are in Omaha when it comes to poverty. U N O would plan to send out a survey to different community organizations that are focused on eliminating or alleviating poverty to get their insight about programs that are out there, the effectiveness of those programs, what gaps there might be, and what other community organizations should be providing feedback on this issue. We really wanna be inclusive with this outreach, and we'll make a point of doing that, and so, oops, excuse me. As members of the public or council members have ideas about where we should be reaching, please send them to me. I'm happy to receive them and make sure those, those organizations are included in this outreach. So we'll go ahead and do a survey, U N O will meet with some community organizations, they'll meet with some city departments, and also get a sense of city programs that are focused on eliminating poverty. And then come the fall, we'll do some community outreach events in partnership with UNO to get the insight of the community on the needs assessment, where the needs assessment shows that the root causes of poverty lie, and then what solutions the city collectively should be, should be suggesting and recommending in this action plan. It's a five-year action plan, so it's something that we'll plan this year. We'll revisit it every two years as the bill requires and then provide and, you know, update the plan, I guess, in five years. So I'd ask you to support this. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Mr. President, members of council, key station, mayor's office. Here as a proponent for item number forty-four, the university is the right partner. I think the research and analysis will yield a very useful action plan and would encourage your yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, go ahead.
My name is Marcus Bell, and I'm the CEO of Omaha Bridges Out of Poverty. And I am a proponent of this act as well and look forward to seeing what the plan has in hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents to number forty-four? Seeing none, any opponents?
Anthony Cato, Jr., twenty-five ninety-six Crown Point Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a little concerned. I'm, I guess I'm, I'm kind of neutral in part, but I'd like some clarification. According to the news last night, the contract or agreement with UNO for this program was to be twenty-four thousand dollars with a one-year, actually six months of report to be due to the city or the city council by the end of the year, according to the news organization. Now, there's a couple of concerns that I have, and the first one's going to be this. Do we actually need another study on poverty? The answer is no. We see it every day in our communities. We see people standing on corners, buses, and on street corners in the median, begging for food or saying they will work for food or give us donations. And we hear people like the people from the Omaha Open Door Mission, Ms. Gregory, I believe is her name. She says, don't give to those people. Give to us so we can help them go further. We also see how CHI Health Center proposed a forty thousand dollar grant to help people who are coming out of prison to reintegrate into the system, which is also part of the poverty thing. So do we actually need another study? The answer is no. We have it, we have, we know what some of the answers are. We need more jobs. We need more mental health counseling. We need places to, for them to go to. One of the places I'd like to see is in Mr. Bagley's neighborhood. You know or are familiar with Mr. Bagley, I'm sure, of the old Mid-City Building Hospital that used to be Bergen Mercy at one time, at fifty-five, five fifteen Dewey? There's two buildings right there that are completely empty and have been there for almost a decade, and that could be revitalized and put people in those and give them programming and assistance to get back out into the community. Are we misguiding ourselves in this ability that we have solutions that we could actually apply today without getting another study? Because we all see it. We're not blind to it. You see people pushing baskets up and down the street. You see people laying on the corner, street corners, staying in front of businesses. We don't need a study for that. We need solutions. And the solution is, how do we get more mental health professionals to give to those people in need? How do we stop food insecurity by either, we have many pantries around the city on an everyday basis that are giving food to them every week, every month? So we can do little things and make it even better. We should be recruiting more mental health professionals. We should be providing a space for people to go in, revitalize their lives by staying in these buildings that we could redevelop, have some housing assistance programs, community action programs, state programs. And we can also, believe it or not, which is what the city, the governor is proposing, we can cut some of our property taxes and make people more responsible and valuable citizens to our community. I applaud what UNO is trying to do with their civic engagement, but we don't need a contract because they can have students who pay their tuition to learn about this each and every day. That's what they go to school for. We should be recruiting them to do that at no cost to the cities and taxpayers and say, hey, that's your solution. Let's make it go forth and go and be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number forty-four?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I am opposed to this ordinance. I'm opposed to a contract. But most of all, and I agree with this gentleman quite a bit, most of I disagree with the apparent language in not just this body, but in the morning body called the Douglas County Board. There is a, a use of language that, for those of those, those of us that pay attention to things on a national basis, that is referred to as cultural Marxism, written about by Mr. Mark Levin, a very well-known attorney and author, but talked about on a lot of talk radio shows. This city has even hired a DEI coordinator, and we pay that DEI coordinator to, I guess, what do you call it? Brain moist the city employees and everything to all the DEI principals, but you're doing so at the expense of the taxpayers, just like what this gentleman said. It's okay for us to try and solve mental illness and hunger, but not at my expense. I don't think there's enough mental health experts, as is. And what are we going to do, which you guys need to decide and talk about maybe today? Because it's a fact that the borders are overrun with illegals, people that are not healthy, people that have been released from prisons, people that have been released from insane asylums, because their governments don't want to take care of them. Send them here, and these people will. Well, what are you going to do when you don't have the money this gentleman was talking about or these people want? For your own citizens, because you're giving so much to the others. Our government, with the help of the United Nations and national partners called five oh one C threes, et cetera, with their best practices on mental health, et cetera, et cetera, are putting up all these illegals and giving them benefits, benefits that are going to be taken away from these other people. The citizens that's supposed to be here, supposed to be talking two ways with you, but you and the Douglas County Board and the state does not allow that. That's unconstitutional.
Larry, you're wondering on the topic here. You guys still have a recovery plan. All right.
Unconstitutional.
Any other opponents to number forty-four?
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony Karifa Rogers, right, thirty-ten Lincoln Boulevard. I'm flummoxed about how a discussion in reducing poverty has been reduced to mental health and in a way that is stigmatizing mental health. I'd remind my dear gentlemen that poverty impacts people of all races. It is not just black, brown, and indigenous people. We have plenty of poor white people in our esteemed city, and we also seek to help them as well. To that end, I'm wondering, as part of the input process, if the potential partners will be looking at the impacts of the criminalization of poverty by law enforcement officials, and if that furthermore will include the elimination of cash bail, which also criminalizes poverty to boot. So I would say that, like, I'm not so much of an opponent of this, but what I am concerned with is much like the very, very milquetoast climate action plan, that it's just going to remain a set of words and not get turned into ordinances like the ordinance we're going to talk about later. So I, I would hope that the city council would ask our esteemed colleagues who came today about some of those questions, but let's please not resort to thinking about poverty when we do know that white supremacy and racism, as well as capitalism, as well as runaway unfettered checks on businesses and a living minimum wage have more to do with poverty than a person's race, their background, or what nation they come from. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number forty-four?
I'll say something. My name is Jason Odom. My address is six four one one, South Hundred and Sixth Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one two seven. I find the wording a little strange of elimination of poverty. Not even Christ tried to eliminate poverty in the world. He said that the poor will always be with you. So is it really trying to eliminate the poor from our community, or is it trying to feed and clothe and house these people? I don't know if you, maybe you can answer that question, but I find the wording especially troubling. Yeah, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
We see matters twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I understand that this study is being, is directed to you by the legislature, so I don't think, I do think it's necessary to meet your obligation. My question is, how does the, your focus on poverty elimination, which I think the city should be doing, doesn't, isn't like, what do you guys call it, like doubling services? Because the county, the county government is supposed to be taking care of the indigent, which are poor people. So as far as collecting data, I think the county officials, elected leaders, they probably have a good database of information about where poverty is. During the pandemic, the qualified census tracts were identified as areas to be concerned with. And then recently, the county board approved an AI contract. So the, the county has AI capacities, and probably so does UNO, so. But my, my, my position is just so that I can say what I'm saying and have you consider working closely with the county, not just with, with UNO, who's going to be doing the study during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, would you light on, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. No, and I just, thank you. I, I just did want to, I appreciate that you understand that we're directed by the legislature, so whether we agree with this or not, it doesn't matter. We, this, this is an unfunded mandate that the City of Omaha was required to do by the legislature. So even if we disagree with the language that the legislature used, or we think different words should be used, or we think a different focus should have been had, that time has passed because the legislature passed LB eight forty. So now this city is required, or we would be in violation of state law, to actually have a plan to eliminate poverty. I have to say, when I saw this, and I saw that most of our plans, if you look back, we're paying anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand or more. And so when I saw that, that UNO was going to give us what they're giving us, they're going to get the data, they're going to use their students, and we're going to use professors, and we're going to have this, and the total amount was basically, we're paying up just a portion of their salary for the work that they're doing of twenty-four thousand dollars. We aren't going to get a cheaper study than that. And when I look at the quality of this study that we're going to get with the amount of data that UNO is using, I, and I'm an alum of UNO, of their political science department, so I can speak from experience that I do think they do an excellent job at the University of Nebraska Omaha. And I've seen the work that they do, so I actually thought this was, this was really good. I, I think the plan and at least the agreement, it's very open. It's not limited to anything. And I think what the plan is, is they first look at the community and let's talk about all these different areas, and let's talk about who's affected, and let's see who it is. So I think they start with a really broad kind of assignment, so to speak. And so if, if we're, if we're mandated to do this by the legislature, I think this was the best choice we could make under that mandate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Yes, actually, I think Juanita's light was on before mine, so I'd like to let Ms. Johnson go first, and I'll, I'll follow.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized?
Um, thank you. But Mr. Harding, you can go ahead and go.
Mr. Harding, the floor is yours.
Couple things. So LB forty to, to Mr. Cato's comments was, the reason we're doing this, I don't disagree. We all know there's poverty that exists, but like, we were tasked to come up with the Affordable Action Housing Plan required by the state. That's what LB eight forty does on, in this regard. And then Mr. Odom, to your comment too about the elimination of poverty, we have a program called Vision Zero Two, which is to completely eliminate death by, you know, for pedestrians and motorists. And we, in reality, we know that's not ever going to get to zero. And like this, you know, we will never completely eliminate poverty, but it is a, a goal to set forth. It is obviously a stretch goal, but that's, that's really what we're, we're here and tasked to do is, is to do the study like we did with the Affordable Housing Action Plan, come up with, get community input, put that together, file it with the state, and then like other studies in the past that maybe get put up on the shelf and other, and never really kind of looked at again or implemented, there will be a two-year review process, and it'll become a living document, and we will have something in place that helps it because things will change along the way as well. And this gives you the flexibility and the ability to make those alterations, those amendments, those changes to address poverty going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, are you in the queue? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming up and expressing your needs and desires regarding the issue regarding poverty. Poverty is a real huge issue in our community, and it has been for a number of years. And so I think the sentiments that everyone shared when they came up was that we have been studied enough, and now action is needed. So at this time, I would like for Kalen, if you would, please come up. I'd have a few questions regarding what is our task.
Joy?
Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Can you please be clear and specific regarding the task before us as it relates to the bill? Does it specifically require that we do a study?
Kalen DeHilius, Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department for the city. I'm just piecing to the bill itself so I can read it. The bill itself requires a needs assessment, which is a comprehensive needs assessment to identify challenges in housing, education, healthcare, employment, access to capital, economic development, and social services in target areas. It requires community engagement and data analysis, utilizing data and research to understand root causes of poverty and measure the impact of interventions. So, and I'll say one more point. It also requires a, a report detailing the city's efforts to eliminate poverty, which encompasses the two elements or components that I highlighted, as well as a handful of other components. So it requires a data analysis, community engagement, and a needs assessment, which I don't think needs to be named a study necessarily, but yes, it, it requires us to dive in and, and come up with the, articulating the root causes of poverty, where we are now and where we're going to be pointing.
And so we are doing a study to satisfy the requirement of a needs assessment. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Also, there was some more conversations about will the analysis, when we look at the analysis of doing this study, collecting the data, will we get some information on police impact?
Dr. Ryan Spawn is the Director of the Center for Justice Research at the University of Nebraska at Omaha, so he focuses on criminal justice. So I anticipate he would fold in a lens related to criminal justice in his review and plan.
And earlier today in our discussion, we had mentioned something about a map. Do you have that map so that we can have a visual to see what area that we will be focusing this study on?
I have a map. Oh, I think I do. One moment, please. I have a map, but it's, it's hard to see because it's overlapping in the act. The city needs to focus on areas that meet three different definitions. And so this map highlights a number of areas and distinguishes which definition each meets. So I'm happy to show it, but it might not be very easy to see.
Would it be easier for you to just kind of give us a boundary or some street crosspoints, things like that?
Sure. So it looks like the northern boundary, there are, there are a couple of clusters, but the biggest cluster is north and southeast Omaha, right? So the northern boundary is just north of McKinley Street. 72nd Street is the boundary sort of in the north with a couple of exceptions. And then the southern boundary goes down to, south of L Street, the street's not identified, so I can't see exactly what street it is. And it goes all the way to the eastern edge of Omaha.
Okay. And we also had another important question that I thought that bubbled up, and that was that the Douglas County is, that is their charge, that's their responsibility overall in the city is to help us take care of mental health and things of that nature. But we also know that there, there is a direct correlation with mental health and poverty. Sometimes they often blend together. And so the question was, they had already done some study regarding mental health. Will we be working with the Douglas County to look at their data as we compile all of the information? And will they also be a partner in this process?
We will be looking at the data they have, and we hope that they'll be a partner. We haven't started working with them yet.
And speaking of partners, I would assume that you've already identified some partners. Would you mind providing us a list of who they are?
I do not have a list of partners or proposed partners with me. We've started brainstorming, but really welcome insight from the community and ask people to, to let us know who they think are important for us to engage with, and we'll certainly engage with those organizations.
So for, for communities that are impacted, and they want to lend a helping hand in terms of identifying partners, they would reach out to you to give you that information?
Yes, they can email me. I can state my email into the record if that would be helpful.
That would be, thank you. Appreciate that.
My email is kalin.dalydehilius@cityofomaha.org. It's K-A-I-L-I-N dot D-A-L-Y-D-E-J-I-L-L-A-S at cityofomaha.org.
Okay. And then there was another question, and that was, what is our real goal? You know, what is our true intentions? Is it in fact to reduce poverty?
Absolutely. My, my, my goal is to come up with some actionable solutions that we, that the city can implement, whether it's a combination of community organizations and city efforts, however it might play out, depending on what we learn and what everyone recommends, to have actionable steps to take to ultimately eliminate poverty, but certainly chip away at it over the next five years and keep making progress.
So can I conclude that when this study is completed, we will perhaps see some data information published to the community to see what that looks like? And then maybe even some action steps as to what we plan to do with the information collected?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'll support this today too, for, for a few reasons. One, as, as has been noted, it is required of the city to do this. The bill was actually introduced by Senator McKinney. And I support what he's trying to do, I think, which is to focus cities on poverty reduction. And so whereas I don't disagree with some of the testimony that this is something we should already be doing and be doing anyway with action steps, that is a requirement, and I do support him in the respect that I think he's trying to get us focused on this, on these solutions, and I appreciate that. When we know economic disparities and poverty is some of the biggest challenges in our community, and when we have a public school system that has free reduced lunch rates of 70, 75%, sometimes greater, we know this is a major issue in our, issue in our community we should be addressing. My only challenge is, and has been stated here already, is we need to get on to the action steps. I talked about this the last couple of weeks when we did talk about bike and pedestrian plans. And I'm encouraged by our climate action plan in its final stages now, and that'll come to the council in the next week or two. I'm encouraged by what was included in the Affordable Action Housing Plan. I think that's a very important one too. But they're only as good as where we're going to take them with action steps. And I think that needs to happen in all three of those cases, and definitely need to happen here. So that's what I'll be looking for. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a question from Larry. And Larry, if you don't mind, can you be brief and about, can you limit your comments to two minutes? And then Mr. Cato, if you would, come up after. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm getting a little bit weary of you people passing the buck back to the state legislature. It's always their fault, and you guys are scared about what they're doing down there this year. But you pay a lot of money, and so does the Douglas County Board, to a consultant that you send down there to lobby for you, not necessarily for us, but for you. You can cut that out of the budget to help pay for mental health. The second item, on mental health. Not every mental health expert is an expert. There's a conflict of interest there, meaning the pocketbook. There's a checklist for everything. There's a checklist for me. In fact, there was a citizen let me know one time that I overheard you guys comparing me to a checklist. Oh, we don't like that guy. Overheard it on a video. He had a checklist on it for a shirt that I wore. Oh, your shirt is offensive. So, you know, mental health is in the eye of the beholder and the guy with power. And I have a grandson that's now 25 years old with disabilities. I know a hell of a lot more about it than the experts do, mainly because they don't want to listen. They have their DSM four with their checklist. Oh, gee, I drove down Laurie Street the other day, and he flies his flag upside down. We need to send the mental health coordinator out to his office, I mean, to his home, because he has an illness. And you're spending money on that through the city police. Out of my pocket, and I don't like it. Stop it.
Thank you. Mr. Cato?
I'm the Cato, 2596 Crown Point Avenue. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge what Mr. Harding, Hardingian said. And he's correct in, in some of what he said, and also what Ms. Milton said. You're required by the legislature to have a plan. Now, we all have studied, and we know what a plan is. That means it's something that you're going to do today. We don't need a study to have a plan. We need to have action. Period. Mr. Hug, Mr. Bagley, Mr. Fesserson, Ms. Johnson, you live in a community where you see homeless people eat shit every day at an intersection between Cummings, Dodge, 30th, Farnham, Leavenworth. Every day. And sometimes it's the same folks. Sometimes they're pushing a basket. Well, one of those baskets was probably taken from a grocery store. I'm not saying you need to lock them up, but there is a statute or a city ordinance says that you can't take one of those. We can do something about that. We can do an intervention right then and there. And it doesn't have to be criminalized. It says, we recognize that you need help. We recognize that there's some kind of trauma, PSD, PTSD, I'm sorry, or even mental health, homelessness, hunger. We know that. We don't need a study. We see it. It's right there. So what's the plan? Do something about it. Take action. When I said, Mr. Bagley, and I'm not trying to pick on you, but when I'm looking at Mid-City, right next to Lasting Hope, then I go up to that community and see there's a hospital. That was a hot, an operating hospital with at least 200 empty rooms that can be revitalized to put people in to give them another chance at life. We know that mental health can't truly be cured, but we can curtail it by counseling and medication and assistance to let somebody know, hey, we're here to help you, help yourself. We also know that there's, every time you go down a certain street, you see a lot of signs, help wanted, retraining there. We also have been pushing community colleges to restaff people to give them jobs in plumbing, electrical, HVC. We see that every day as well. So do we need a study? I understand that you have to have a plan by the legislator that's, that he called for, and I'm agreeing with that. But you don't need a study. You need action. And that requires the plan to be put forth, so you can try to reduce poverty, and you can reduce taxes. And I can tell you this, we, the people, will be much more appreciative of that than saying, let's have another study. Because if I'm a college student, which I was, I've taken classes out of UNO, and one of the things they teach you, you give back to the community. You don't need to have a study. Because they, you're paying to get that education to do just that. Period. Let's do action. Put the plan to work. Let's try to bring the numbers down. Let's try to help those people that are standing out there with no shirts on, talking to the sky, that need help, that need food, that need housing, that are not living under bridges, sleeping on concrete. The United States Supreme Court just made it easier for you to arrest a person who's sleeping on the sidewalk. That should be criminalized. And when I say criminalized, why would you arrest a person who's sleeping outside? Because they have no place to go? We, the city of Omaha just put more money into San Antonio Francis with a new project that they're building right down off of 16th Street. The Steffens Center out in South Omaha has asked for more money to do more programs there. That's a plan. We don't need a study to fix something that we already know it's broke. We need to do something about it. That's all I'm asking. And I think the citizens are asking the same. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Kalin, if you could, please come back up, please. You, you heard Mr. Cato's passionate discussion regarding a plan. Could we forego this study and utilize the information that we already have? As we discussed earlier in our conversation, there is data that we can use, and that way we can move this process along a lot quicker. What are your thoughts about that? I mean, we have the community experts. We have people in our community that could help us facilitate creating a plan so that we could move, again, faster at getting to the root resolution and, and reducing poverty.
Kalin DeHilius, Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I think whether it's a needs assessment or a study, it's playing with semantics, right? The requirements of the legislative bill are that we can conduct a needs assessment, analyze data, create a report, and then make a plan based on that. And so absolutely, there's a lot of data readily available, and there's a lot of data from community organizations. And what UNO is going to do is take that and put it all together, so we have it in one place. And we can point to the root cause of poverty, align on that through these community stakeholder meetings to make sure, hey, we're all aligned with this. And then go to solution. So it's, as you see in the, in the resolution, we're aiming for a timeline that ends this year, to have everything put together this year. We're not, we're not intending to make this last until the timeline is, is due, or until this report is due or action plan next July. We're looking to really get ahead. So to me, the, the work is necessary, because although that data is out there and exists, someone needs to assemble it. And so that's what UNO is going to do, in part.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Milton?
No, I think that was a good point that you just made. And I went back just to see, there is nothing in the statement of work that says study. So I, somebody called it a study, but it says it's an agreement to perform a needs assessment, data collection, community engagement, and research services to the city of Omaha for the purpose of producing a plan. So they're really just coordinating with everybody and taking all the data that they have and that others have and compiling it together. So tech, actually, I don't see anything in here that says it is a study. It's how they're coming up with a plan. So I think with that, it probably makes everybody happy, the opponents and proponents, because it's not a study. We're just putting together a plan that will help us come up with actionable solutions that I, I think everybody wants. So I appreciate, I appreciate the speed in which this is going to happen too, because usually these things go on and on. So I think this is very aggressive and can be done with a lot of people, like I said, at a lot lower cost than I've seen any other type of consultant that we've had before here. We're not using a consultant. We're using the University of Omaha, University of Nebraska Omaha, and their students, who I think will probably be providing the information and doing a lot of the work for free, and also learning from it. So I, I do think that this is really good for, for us as a result and in response to the law that was passed. We didn't, we're not passing the buck to the legislature. The legislature passed it.
I queue Mr. Rowe.
I've got a great segue into that. I'd like to ask Matt. I mean, what are the consequences of not abiding by a mandate from the state legislature? What if we said, no, we're not going to do this? What's, what's the consequences to the city?
Matt, who's the City of Omaha Law Department? I think the consequence could be that we would be found, you know, not in compliance with LB 840 and the requirements that are set forth on us. The state could take action against us. They could file a lawsuit against us to compel us to do it, which would result in additional costs in that fashion. There could also be other punitive steps that the legislature could take in the future with regard to any type of state funding or state aid that we get. They could use that as, hey, look, Omaha doesn't comply with the things that we tell them to do. That could have an effect on future appropriations for the legislature. But the looming concern would be some sort of litigation to have some basically court order to compel us to do it. And when a court order is done, we don't have the flexibility, I would say, in coming up with our own plan, as opposed to one that a court would force upon us.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps, helps me a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Is there a motion? There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Milton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 45, an ordinance to provide that the city of Omaha be authorized to issue and sell general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed 14.5 million for environmental sewer projects. A is amendment of the whole requested by the Public Works Department.
The vote on number 45 is today. It was not on consent agenda because it requires an amendment of the whole. There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Milton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 46, an ordinance to approve a street name change in North Streams Replant One from J Street to I Street. Planning Department recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 47, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Omaha Botanical Center for the operation and maintenance of Luritz and Gardens.
Public hearing on number 47 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the city council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, President and Council. I'm Ennis Anderson. I'm the CEO of Luritz and Gardens, 100 Bancroft Street, Omaha. So this agreement strengthens the unique partnership between the garden and the city. As the relationship grows, as the city and the garden grow together, with the community, it helps us serve it better in a meaningful and authentic way. Our ultimate goal is to become treasured locally and distinguished nationally. And when we think about what the vision is for the garden, it's to become the world And when we think about what the vision is for the garden, it's to become the world-class Botanic Garden for the Great Plains region to provide memorable experiences for all, everybody. So any questions? Thank you, and nice to meet you all.
Thank you. Welcome. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizens Foundation. And Mr. Frederson, I thought it was only me and you went to the University of Nebraska Omaha. So I guess Mrs. Melton as well. But at Business College, I recommend that you send this to Botanical Garden survey that you're speaking of to the University of Nebraska Business College to make sure that medical marijuana should be applied to this program.
All right, Donnie. Any other opponents to number 47?
I'll talk again. My name's Jason Odom again, 6411 South 106 Circle. I just have a question how funding the Botanical Garden will interplay with the Climate Action Plan. Is there any, sorry, where's the CEO at? I lost him. I'm just curious, like, are they going to be growing seeds that we can then provide to our citizens to help them grow their own gardens or having a nursery for the baby trees that we have to plant all over the city that we can feed ourselves? Like, how do those two things play together? Second. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 47? Public hearing is closed. Matt, I might just ask you one question. I'm supportive of this. I think it is obviously a worthy entity in our city that attracts lots of visitors and income throughout our city and revenue to our city in addition to being a quality-of-life amenity, I think, for all citizens. But there's lots of those in the city, right? And there's only a few by which we have a multi-year agreement with, like is being proposed here. And I think a distinguishing thing about, say, the zoo or Lawrence and Gardens is that we still own some of that property. Some of that property is city-owned, which I think is part of the thought here, right?
Yes, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. You're exactly right. There is a significant portion of the land that the Botanical Garden sits on that is city, or in this case, park property. And so we have the privilege, the honor of, excuse me, serving as the liaison and the direct connection from the city to the operations of the Botanical Garden. This is essentially the reactivation or the extension with the new iteration of the funding support, similar to what we provide to the zoo on a measurable scale in regards to economic impact to the city. The previous agreement expired, and we landed on this new iteration. And it is actually a step forward in terms of our connectivity. We will have representation on the board for the gardens as we do for the zoo. So it's really strengthening and growing our relationship. As Mr. Anderson mentioned, it's really the next step as far as us really becoming true partners, stronger partners than we've already been.
Thank you. And I do want to welcome the new director to Omaha, too. We look forward to working with you. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Mr. Anderson.
Come back down, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Anderson. We've had the privilege of already meeting, but I thought I would give you the opportunity to tell the rest of my City Council colleagues about your background, how you ended up in Omaha.
So after about 15 years of hotel management, I got into the world of public gardens because I really loved nature from my time of being a Boy Scout. So when I started in public gardens, I started out as the CFO of the Fort Worth Botanic Garden and, you know, grew with that. It became a municipal garden, and then we transitioned to a public-private partnership. So with Omaha being rated so highly of places for, you know, to raise a small family, it was important for me to find a place that my girls could grow up. So in public gardens, I went from CFO to COO and then got prepared, working with the city of Fort Worth and really turning that garden into a garden that's treasured by all. So I look to do the same for Lawrence and Gardens here in Omaha.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to Omaha.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 48, an ordinance to approve and authorize special tax revenue redevelopment bonds, Series 2024, in the amount of $50 million.
Public hearing on number 48 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 49, an ordinance to amend Section 5.16 of the Home Rule Charter to amend Article 5 finance to increase the monetary amount, which requires public bidding from $20,000 to $50,000.
The public hearing on number 49 is today. On these next two items, we'll have the Law Department give a brief summary of what they do since they are proposed charter amendments. Mr. Endenbosh, you're recognized.
Thank you. President, members of the City Council, Bernard Endenbosh, Deputy City Attorney. Obviously, what we have before you is an amendment to Section 5.16 of the Charter. It is, it was, this particular amendment was at the request of the Legislative Affairs Committee. As many of the council members know, and many members of the public know, Section 5.17 of the Charter was amended in May of 2024, which increased the contract amount that needed City Council approval from $20,000 to $50,000. Somewhat related, but not part of that particular issue, was Section 5.16 of the Charter, which has language that requires public competitive bidding for contracts greater than $20,000. And in instances where contracts are publicly bid, it requires City Council approval for contracts that are $20,000. Obviously, that leaves a little bit of a discrepancy. So the result of this particular amendment is it would move the amount for competitive public bidding from $20,000 to $50,000, which would then also allow the competitively bid contracts that would only need council approval if they are for an amount of $50,000 or more. So it aligns with the changes that were adopted by the voters in 5.17. This particular amendment was in the previous ideation of charter changes, but there were three in that particular one. And obviously, we broke them up separately with 5.17 in May, and this addresses 5.16 in November if the council approves this ordinance. Thank you.
And accurate to say, unless this is approved, the previous item approved by the voters cannot be enacted?
No, that's not, I don't think that's fair. So there are any number of contracts that do not require public bidding, professional services contracts, sole source. Those types of contracts, at this point, don't come to this council unless they're an amount of $50,000 or greater, based on the change. But this just, there's a portion of those contracts that require competitive bidding that have to come to this council even though they're less than $50,000.
Got it. Thank you. Any other proponents on number 49? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 50, an ordinance to amend Section 2.05 of the Home Rule Charter to amend Article 2 to provide for situations for forfeiture of office by City Council, A's communications and opposition.
Public hearing on number 50 is today. Proponents? Mr. Endenbosh.
Thank you. President, members of the City Council, Bernard Endenbosh, Deputy City Attorney. This particular amendment was at the direction of the Law Committee and an amend Section 2.05 of the Charter. That section of the Charter addresses removal of a City Council person, and obviously, that issue came to a forefront with some of the issues that occurred a couple of years ago on the council. This particular amendment proposes three changes to Section 2.05. The first one, if you're no longer a resident of the City Council district that you represent, that you represent, you would now forfeit your position. Currently, that's not a requirement in order to remain on the City Council. Secondly, the current requirement is that you miss three consecutive months that are not excused in order to forfeit your City Council seat. This changes that requirement to four consecutive meetings that are not excused. So if meeting, if your attendance is excused, you don't count towards the four consecutive meeting. And obviously, that's an intention to ensure representation by people in the various districts and maybe some of the delay that we saw the last time. The third provision concerns the potential to have a council member forfeit their seat if they violate a code of conduct that's adopted by the council. Now, that's contingent upon the council adopting a code of conduct. If no code of conduct is adopted, then that particular provision would not apply. If a code of conduct were adopted, then if five members of the City Council determine that the code of conduct was violated, and they also determine that removal from offices is suitable action as a result, then that particular council member would be deemed to have forfeited their office. I understand that there is an item later on the agenda in which will discuss the merits of the code of conduct. That's not the issue before this particular council as far as this particular ordinance. And I do want to make one clarifying comment. The city code, executive order, city policy, all do apply to all city employees, including directors and others. They do not apply to elected officials, and I think that's the origin of some of the thought process. I know Mr. Koozie, when we get to the code of conduct, will address the motivation for that in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizens Foundation. You know, when I took political science at UNO, I had to take it over in the summer because when I wrote my article in political science, the teacher didn't like it, so she made me take it over. So the whole class in the summer, political science. There's a problem, this is a good process here, but the problem I have run into in my political science reviews, they have on this YouTube, Benny Palermo is asking Dan Welch and others, Frank Brown, well, he's passed away, God rest his soul, and Jim Voca to be brought before this council. I said, why? And then I look at this whole process, and Marion Barry, the mayor of Washington, D.C., who can get convicted and come back and run for the mayor, should Benny be allowed to come back and run for his seat if I missed a kick? That should be put in this as well. If you get caught for smoking crack, you are not allowed to come back. But Marion Barry in Washington, D.C., the capital of the United States of America, was allowed to come back and get his seat. I'm asking myself, a felony shouldn't be a problem, then, should it? We'll get back to this gentleman here. We have to write the laws real strict because I don't think Benny want to come back here with all this crazy behavior like Jim Voca and Dan Welch. I told Dan Welch, we projected you to be to the Senate, but you was a disappointment. So I'm going to call my friends from Rome, Italy, and say, one of your sons need to come home.
All right. Any other opponents to number 50?
Opponents are...
Am I still in proponents? Yeah, I'm sorry. It's still proponents. I'm sorry. Those in favor.
Ford Momarts Brown, 1511 Farnham, number 508. I think the last gentleman who spoke was right. This council should spend a lot of time taking on all the difficulties and problems of the entire world and work up a code of conduct that will cover all of that. And then you should bring it to a vote to address every single problem that faces the entire world. Of course, I'm being sarcastic. You know, I think that, what is the source of these suggestions?
You have to speak to us at the moment.
The Law Committee.
Are you in favor of this, number 50?
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea, despite my sarcasm. I think we need a code of conduct. Hopefully, the council will do a better job of it than the Supreme Court. But I also noted, noticed in the case of Vinnie Palermo that there was some reluctance to remove a colleague, and so this seems to be addressing that reluctance, that council members not wanting, of council members not wanting to remove a colleague. And if we can get by that, and so they won't have to feel shame or guilt, but the colleague who needs to be removed can still be removed. And I think some of the penalties need to be a little bit stiffer, but I really think this is an issue that needs to be addressed. The one thing that I would suggest be taken into consideration before a final vote on this is America has gotten itself hooked on the idea of impeachment and recall, and we have rejected our common law predecessors from the United Kingdom of a vote of no confidence. You don't have to convict somebody. You don't have to prove them guilty. If you don't have confidence that they can do the job, then simply vote no confidence and replace them with somebody in whom you can have confidence. I think that's an idea that we have sadly lost sense of, and we should consider that for this and other future endeavors. And that's all I have to contribute on this issue.
Thank you for your time. Other proponents to the number 50? Seeing none, any opponents?
Anthony Cato, 2596 Crown Point Avenue. I'm an opponent of this particular one because I just feel that the City Council, which is trying to govern itself with a code of conduct, that being all well and good and said, should have that done by the vote of the people. The people should have a direct say into a lot of the concerns that have been addressed by some of the other proponents. One of the things I look in particular is because if a council member is convicted of a crime or allegedly involved in a crime, duly, it shouldn't take that long to have them removed from office. But let's say, for an example, some comments are made by a City Council member towards a member of the city planning board, city attorney's office, city parks, recreation, city highway roads. That doesn't constitute detrimental of character or conduct. This means they have a disagreement and they didn't approve of what that particular person was thinking. Does that mean they should be removed from office? If they weren't diplomatic in the way they described it? No. They're just drinking, they're speaking their frustrations. We all have everyday frustrations. I think it's, the code of conduct has to be very succinct, and it should be a violation of not a detriment of character, but of the law. And if you're going to do that and not follow procedures or parliamentary procedures, then there should be a reflection of that by a vote of the people. As the gentleman said, if you don't have a vote of confidence, then you vote them out of office. But you don't remove them because they were duly elected and their comments are duly respected, should be, even though they might be somewhat disrespectful to someone else, they might be applauded by someone else as well. That's called freedom of speech. And we can't stymie that in this City Council meetings by saying, a code of conduct says you can't do this, you can't say this. But on the other hand, you can get on TV and make comments about what you don't think is right in one part of the city, but you don't really apply that for other parts of the city. And I've seen that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I thought it was kind of offensive when I saw two City Council members got on TV and talked about what they thought wasn't right for their community, but then turn around and say, let's let the market decide. Well, evidently, somebody in that market must have decided that. But that was disrespectful to someone who says, hey, wait a minute. I didn't vote for that. I don't agree with that. Maybe that person should be removed. They can do that at the ballot box, not by seven members of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Louisiana 2709 Dewey Avenue. What I'm about to say, you've heard me say this before, when you removed Vinnie Palermo as vice president, you were gearing up to remove him as a council member. I think Mr. Koozie said, well, we looked through the city charter and the codes, and there was only two ways to remove him, and that's if he misses three consecutive months, which that's what transpired. And then he said that he has to violate the ordinance on conflict of interest, which my position is that you have rules of order. You don't need the city charter. You don't need the codes to remove somebody as council member. You put it in your rules of order. That's where a removal of a council member belongs. You have accepted Robert's Rules of Order as a guide, or not as a guide, as a governing document to your proceedings when they're not specified. So look into the Robert's Rules of Order, elevate that language into, to be placed on your rules of order as a section in your rules of order. I think that's the more appropriate way to go about it because if you adopt this, you're going to be in the same situation where this council or a future council will say, well, there's only... there's only certain ways that we can remove somebody." So, adopting this limits your ability to remove a council member, especially for unforeseeable Ford made a good point that no confidence should suffice to, to remove a council member. And if you start explaining why you remove, why you should be removing a council members, then the, and then you remove them, the council member may have to take this council to court. And then, what is the judge to do? He's, the judge isn't gonna reinstate a council member. The judge is, is gonna want to be conservative and allow what's transpired to, to remain. So, that's my suggestion, is nix this charter change and stick with the rules of order, stick with standard procedures of deliberate assemblies that use procedure in the rules to remove one of their members. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm opposed to this, particularly because of the code of conduct business. You're taking away one of my rights, which is to vote for my representative. I can't vote for or against every one of, all seven of you, I can only vote for or against one of them. But all four or seven, all seven of you are gonna vote against me when it comes to whether a mayor should be replaced, or a city council member should be replaced. Unconstitutional, ladies and gentlemen, and a waste of taxpayer funds. Now, I've noticed that screen back there has a 20-second delay, so anything we say might not get out to the public. Have you, have you paid attention? There's 20 seconds delay on that screen from the time I get out of my chair to it appears on the screen. So, what is it that you edit? A few weeks, a few months back, I caught the Douglas County Board editing some stuff out of my comments, so why not this, when you have a 20-second delay? And it's YouTube, probably. I've, I've stood up here and watched the behavior between you people and Juanita, when you didn't like something that's wanting to say it, or wanted to say. And I've watched you grimacing, squirming in your seats. I'd like to remove some of you for that, but I can't, I can't. I can only remove one. But then, I'm only one out of so many voters? That doesn't work, does it? Declaration of Independence says that when your government isn't, doesn't, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it is your right, your duty to alter, change, abolish, replace, and reinstitute it. It doesn't say a revolution. But it applies to this board as well as the county board, and as well as the state legislature. And I agree with a local person, a Nebraska person that has run for and been defeated at office a couple of times, so he does have standing, that the parties in the state is a uniparty. It's not only a unicameral, but a uniparty. You're all in it together to preserve your own power. And this has got to change, because you're supposed to be listening and talking back and forth with the citizens, me and that gentleman, even him. You don't make a lot of these kind of decisions on, on your own. That's for the citizens to have a part in, okay?
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents?
Joe Fox, 461 Hartman Avenue. Good afternoon. I'm in opposition of the situation here. I think it's unnecessary. Like has been stated before me, these elected officials, if not deemed to do their job correctly, will be taken into the hands of the people at the ballot box. There's no need to have an elected official taken off of their post without being elected off of, in a sense. And I'm curious as to how the code of conduct will be created if it's just not by Milton, Bagley, and Harding, the law committee? Will that be voted on in November by chance? Lot of things that come up about Vinnie and what should have happened with him, which didn't. And just the way a council member, council member acts, known by a lot of these citizens, especially me, that's new to this whole game, we weren't offended at all about what has gone on in here with flair of emotion. I mean, we are human, okay? Underneath all those fine fibers that humans made for you, you're still human underneath those clothes. So, for somebody to act like a human in here with emotion and be disrespected therefore, that's, that's discriminatory, and that's against your fellow man, okay, against your fellow human, okay? Just 'cause comments might have hurt your feelings, or talked about your district, and complained about the lack of representation in our district, my district, their district, and, and like I said, hurt your feelings, there's, there's no reason as to why now we're creating some charter years after the Vinnie situation, trying to remove an elected official. That will be done at the ballot box by not re-electing them. And just a little like will be done with this mayoral election. So, this city, like he said, "I'd like to remove some of you guys." And I can't, but yet you can remove my person that represents me? We only have that vote. And to, to make it a vote amongst each other and exclude the people is an injustice. We pay your salaries in this building. We all know you have other interests and other companies, okay? You work for us, and if given the opportunity to change stuff as a person, I would vote on, these council meetings happen to be started at maybe 6 o'clock. So, all my buddies on the job site and all my people working these real jobs that pay a lot of taxes as well can attend these meetings.
We can't have applause or a reaction in the audience, please, while somebody's talking?
So, it's, it's one of those things. Let's start at 2, because that's convenient for us. Us is who, we're us. That's, what's convenient for the people is to be heard and represented appropriately by our voice and by our votes. And for you, council members, to create something to take our voice and our votes into your hands and be able to remove somebody that represents us, it seems unfair. I'll state this one more time. The removal of an elected official on this council should be done at the ballot box by the people.
Okay, thank you. Other opponents?
I'll try to be brief. Joe Higgins, 1110 East Camden Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. You know, I've been coming to council for about three or four years, and I struggle with trying to get everybody together. And I, I agree with a lot of the opponents about constitutionality, free speech, voter I just think there might be a better way we can accomplish working together. And, don't get me wrong, I get frustrated, I get angry. I've learned that when I get angry, I shut up and I don't talk to you. You guys see me all the time. I'm not that angry yet, am I? But, because I'll say something I regret, and if I have that kind of altercation, I, I would hope that we would do that in private, not in a public meeting such as this. So, I would encourage more engagement outside of here, and I would like you not to prove this as proposed, because I don't think it's a step forward. I think it's an attempt for you guys to move forward, and I applaud what you're trying to do, but I oppose the code of conduct section. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Good afternoon, Council Andrew Adams, 2301 South 33rd Street. And I'd like to thank the previous speakers for sucking all the thunder out of my speech. So, I don't know what the genesis of this is. Palermo was my former councilman, so if that's what this is about, so be it. But I would just, again, encourage everybody before voting, just slow down, take some time, and just consider the civic virtues of this ordinance. And I want to qualify my statements by saying, you want to send this to the, this ordinance to a vote, which sounds, which sounds good. You want the public to weigh in. And while that may seem like the small d democratic thing to do, does it also not create unintended consequences? So, ask yourselves a couple questions here. Does the, does the ordinance bypass other democratic means to resolve the issue, specifically the voter's voice to petition for a recall? Does the ordinance create authority or power that the city council should not have? And is the will of the voter really being protected? So, I believe that this ordinance creates a solution in search of a problem. I believe the ordinance gaslights the public into believing that the second body, the people, are unable to solve problems that they may have with their elected official, and that only the city council can take the appropriate corrective action. So, I just wanted to hit these real quick. Oh, this is not gonna fit. The first item will provide that a member of the city council who, who is no longer a resident of the district in which they were elected forfeits their position. So, all six of you campaigned for your seat on the dais. I'm sure none of you did that with the intention of then moving out of the district, but life comes at all of us from 100 different directions. There's any number of acceptable reasons why someone would want or need to move out of the district. But if the voters believe that their councilman or councilwoman cannot represent their interests because they're no longer live in the district, then they are able to pursue a recall. The real problem is, I see it, is that what becomes of the seat once, once forfeited under this ordinance? I didn't see anything about a special election. Are we just gonna abandon representative democracy completely and continue this long streak of appointments? And I don't mean to be flippant here, but what are we on now, three in the last 10, 12 years? I honestly don't know the answer, but it's, it's becoming a recurring issue. The second item will provide that a member of the city council forfeits their position if they are absent for four consecutive weeks. And I see how this has almost universal appeal, especially given recent history. But here's the thing, voters get the representative that they show up for. So, let's look forward and not back. If we have a hypothetical future council member who is elected and then becomes derelict in their duty, we already have a democratic process to handle this through a recall. And then we get right back in to this appointment by fiat vacancy procedure, which nobody wants. The third item will provide that the city council will have deemed to have forfeited their office if five members of the city council determine that they violated the code of conduct adopted by the city council after a public meeting. So, I find this one actually the most concerning, mostly because, for lack of a better example, five members of the council can effectively impeach, convict, and remove any, any other council member without any, any sort of check or bounce. That seems to be missing a bit. And that's just not how things are supposed to be done. The concept appears rational, but five council members determining what's best for 60,000 to 70,000 residents of a district is not, not the democratic process. So, let me wrap up here. I've interacted with this body more than, or with this chamber more than 99% of the second body, so I feel confident but respectful in saying that sometimes this chamber forgets who works for who. As a member of, or as a citizen of the second body, I do not want to give the city council any more authority than it already has. But I can almost hear every, I can almost hear your thoughts here that, well, this ordinance doesn't interfere with the recall process, and I agree. So, let's just be honest with the voters, and I would encourage you to kind of adopt more of a Hippocratic oath, first do no harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents? I think you already spoke on this item. You can't speak twice.
Yep.
What if they convinced?
No. Yes.
I'm sure a lot of people are here, specifically, code of conduct, and I want to make sure all that's, and all that's kind of taken together in one, which is the next item. And then, this one deals with really the charter change specifically. So, I just wanted to make sure that those who are testifying here, so that they get the opportunity on the, on the relevant item, have the opportunity to speak then and not have to repeat themselves.
Yeah, that is true. This is the charter amendment, but it does refer to a, to a code, a code of conduct, so it's not out of order to speak to it. But if you want to speak to the details of the code of conduct, that is the next item.
That was what I was trying to...
Okay, Ms. Weston?
Thank you. I'm not gonna do it. I'm not gonna do it. Cheryl Weston, 1124 Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And what I say I'm not gonna do is, I found your comments to be disrespectful to me as a citizen, to make that point of order. I think we are all intelligent to know what we are being an opponent or proponent about when we came down to this to speak. My comments, this letter serves as an opposition to the item, which I understand fully is 50, an ordinance proposing to amend Section 205 of the Omaha Rural Charter of the City of Omaha. Updating the timing of the removal of city council members addressed by Section 2.5, removal from and forfeit of the office of the council member, sub-items 1 through 7, I can understand, and those can possibly be acceptable. Those were the items that were created by a city council member who were, who was proven guilty of charges. I'm just so upset with you. However, the inclusion of eight is unacceptable, and I strongly oppose it. This act has been dubbed, dubbed the Vinnie Palmero Ordinance, and I would agree that that may be true for statements 1 through 7. However, let's be honest. Item 8 was requested by the Council Law Committee, members Bagley, Harding, and Milton. They discussed this in their committee meetings for their sole purpose, because we need to be honest and upfront, because some of you, you know you're hiding behind it. Sole purpose of addressing respect and treatment of individuals, human beings of each other, to address Councilwoman Johnson and the friction believed to be created between her and other members of the council. As one person from the audience said, "We all get emotional because we have human feelings, just as I have this human feeling right now, I'm trying to control." Some people are able to control those better than others. The handling of the friction is addressed in the Omaha Municipal Charter, and I've read it, looked it up, had discussions with law, so I, I know what I'm seeing and reading, because I'm capable of doing that. And should be handled by the president of the Omaha City Council President, just as other branches of the government, the mayor and her cabinet, they are allowed to address the beh... they are allowed to address the behavior of members of their staff. It was publicly stated that other cities have a code of conduct. So my question, does that necessarily make it right for Omaha, Nebraska to have a code of conduct? I'm sure there are a lot of things that they have code of conduct for, or have things that Omaha doesn't have and Omaha has that they don't have. I would like to point out, and I can be Google-checked and fact, Omaha, Nebraska has had a city council since 1857, when it was first incorporated as a city. The current Omaha City Council is an elective legislative body that was established in 1956, when the city adopted its home rural charter. The charter established a mayor-council form of government with seven nonpartisan council members serving for a four-year term. What does that say about Omaha needing a code of conduct? 1857, 1956. Perhaps the reason you talk about a code of conduct, it is the current toxic mix of council members creating this fabricated need to have a code of conduct. This code of conduct is taking away the electoral choice, the citizens who elected each council member by their decision of a sitting council. This is a form of voter suppression. And folks who are watching this, and it goes on the record, this is only a first step. If this is passed, this is just a first step to suppress that vote. On the other side of city government, the mayoral, it is the people who have a right to remove their choice of leadership. It's called recall. That could also be used for a city council member. If the law committee, Bagley, Harding, Melton, felt such a great need that the councilperson, Councilman Harding, and if you think I have it wrong, just go fact-check it. It's on Google. It's on WWT YouTube. Harding's statement was, "We should be honest and ethical and treat people with the respect needed and be held at a higher standard of accountability inside and outside of city government." If that was true, you'd be honest. Honest, tell the reason why you're doing this. Why didn't the council hold town hall meetings to see what the people wanted? Did they feel it was necessary to have this code of conduct? Why is this code of conduct being pushed through in item 50 before item 51 is even approved? Why put this charter amendment on a November ballot that most people will never even read what each charter amendment is requesting, since as of this date, according to the election commissioner, there's approximately going to be 13 ballot resolutions on the November ballot? How many do you think are going to be read? You're taking away the vote of the people we only have, as others have said. We can only elect one. But when we elect that one, it's supposed to be when we come collective together, you are supposed to be representing all of us. Don't take away my vote for somebody else. Does this council really want to be honest, ethical, or is this just a way to corral a specific individual? And I close with saying, be careful, be careful of this precedent that you are setting in trying to push this through on a ballot initiative. You're not representing, you're not respecting the people when you don't house city town hall meetings to say, hey, this is what's coming up, this is something important, and could take away your vote. And I'm not going to say thank you for the time, because that's what you're supposed to do.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Good afternoon. My name is Dorothy Johnson. I live at 2603 North 32nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. I am born, raised, and currently residing in North Omaha, District 2, to be exact. And I wanted to come up here because I couldn't miss the opportunity to showcase the amount of diversity that you have with the opposition of item number 50. I too understand the difference between item 50 and item 51. I can read, and I can read between the lines as well, sir. For me, I want you all to be aware of the fact that we know what is trying to be done here, and because we know whether we're in this meeting or in community, we understand the prideful, egotistical, oppressive nature of item 50. I'll speak to item 51 next. But I wanted to showcase the diversity. I'm sure me and some folks in this room have never agreed, perhaps, but I want to showcase that you have folks that are far left, folks that are far right, perhaps Democrats and Republicans. And I think you all are being a little bit aggressive, not even passive aggressive. This is aggressive. This is oppressive. It is targeting and scapegoating, and we know it. Ms. Melton, I don't think you've looked up from that paper as people have been opposing, but the aggressive nature of what you've asked your legal department to do, this is the space where we hold you all accountable to what you all do. You'll vote as you vote, but I couldn't miss the opportunity to stand with these gentlemen in opposition of what you're trying to do here and on the next item. We can read, and we can read between the lines. We know the temperature of the tempers that have flared amongst you all, so I hope you all take that into consideration as you pass this next vote, that we know what you're saying. And additionally, I struggle as an African-American woman, looking at one only African-American and African-American female before me. So if we were to go to vote, right, if this was in your hands, she stands no chance against the majority. So I do believe that this decisions, code of conduct decisions, should lie with the people, because your numbers just aren't reflective of this community appropriately based on representation. Before I close, I want to let you know I am qualified to stand here, but I don't have the votes to sit where you are. But I do work with the NAACP, and I am the vice president of diversity, equity, inclusion at a global venture capital firm, and I provide instruction and guidance in 46 markets, including Germany, Puerto Rico, Alaska. So we can read, and we can read between the lines here. And I just ask that you all be mindful of what you're saying and what you're doing, because we should be one community, one city that does good for all, not just good for some, but is incredibly relational and personal, and we know it. So I hope you guys stop that for the sake of integrity of not just this council, but for this city, because Norfolk is watching, and Lincoln is watching, Grand Island is watching. And I just want to leave you all with that, but happy to stand in solidarity with Joe Fox, who I went to high school with, and I'm not sure of that gentleman's name. But we have never agreed at these meetings, and I wanted to call out that we agreed today. And we believe that these decisions, code of conduct decisions, I am a little less aware of the charter, but code of conduct, let's leave that with the community. And I believe you guys are overstepping by trying to make these kind of decisions above our head. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? If not, I'm going to close public hearing. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Yeah, just a couple. A sense of clarification. Bernard, I'll ask the question maybe as you're walking down, but so the cover letter says absent for consecutive, for four consecutive weeks, but the ordinance says it is four consecutive meetings, and I want to make sure that it's, the intent is the four consecutive meetings, not the four consecutive weeks, as stated in the cover letter.
Yeah, the language in the ordinance, that's the actual change to the code, is four consecutive meetings that are unexcused.
Yeah.
And that's also the language that's in the, that would be in the ballot question.
Okay. Then the second question is, if the code of conduct is not approved, then we would have to amend, and since Cecil both be on the agenda next week for a vote, not that that means they're both voted on next week, but if the code of conduct is not approved, then we would have to amend the language of this one that we're considering now, or talking about now, before it would go to the election commissioner for a vote, no?
I don't think so. Because the reality is, let's say the code of conduct that's before you is not adopted, and this ordinance is, and this ordinance is approved. Section 8 of the part that adds the thing only talks about a violation of code of conduct if you've approved one. You could have the language in the charter, and to the extent that you've never approved a code of conduct.
That's, it's not there.
It's moot to some extent, but it could remain there.
And certainly that contemplates that if, at a future time, if the code of conduct were approved.
Yes.
And it could be amended over time.
Absolutely.
That way, it's still included in the language that would be in the, in what would be the charter amendment, if it were approved. It gives that flexibility to make those changes in that.
Correct. The charter amendment is not approving a particular code of conduct. It has nothing to do, it doesn't approve, it's not contingent upon the code of conduct that's item 51 on the agenda.
Right.
It just basically says, if there is a code of conduct that's been approved by the council after a public hearing, then that language is enforceable.
And that's one of the reasons why I was trying to make the point of order. It was not, it was not an affront, it was not in disrespect toward any person, and I'm sorry, it was read that way. And then the last item I have on this one is, if, because of the results of redistricting, and a council member becomes not a resident of the district they were elected from because of redistricting, is that something that we should probably consider? I know in the past, the practice has been, once you're on the council, generally, if there's a redistricting done at that time, that you don't redistrict someone other council. But I do remember a point in time when that happened, and I think it was Mark Kraft and Warmon Lowe ended up having to run against each other. So should we probably, should we have some consideration as to language if a council member, as a result of redistricting, no longer lives in the district from which they were elected, be, I don't think that should be grounds for removal. That's my personal opinion.
The way it's currently written, if you're no longer in your district for whatever reason, you would forfeit your position. If it was the will of the council, that the charter amendment, proposed charter amendment read something else, and we wanted to codify that and put that in the language of the charter, certainly I could, we could do an amendment to that effect.
Okay, I might have a conversation later then. Thank you. That's all I have on this one.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Bernard, these questions are for you. Not that it matters much, but correct me if I'm wrong. You made mention of the city council member having an issue two years ago. My memory says that that issue took place last year, April of 2023.
And I might, I might have misstated the year. I was obviously referencing Mr. Palermo and his absences from the council.
Okay, so the only reason why I brought that to your attention, because it really doesn't matter much, because I knew what you were talking about. However, sometimes, because of different cultural backgrounds, things are stated and we interpret them differently. And when we look at the code of conduct here that's being proposed, I'm afraid that the individuals being of one particular cultural, having one ethnicity, they may just as well make the mistake of siding with someone being at fault or in error, simply because of those differences, which is another reason why the conversation, from my perspective, as it relates to committee appointments and things like that, has been echoing in this city council because of those differences. The people that I serve don't necessarily walk the talk of the majority. Far too often, they can be misperceived. So it's quite concerning that we can have a tool that can do a knee-jerk reaction that would criminalize or punish a person that has been placed in an elected official role.
I don't think a code of conduct criminalizes. I just want to be clear, legally it does, and I do appreciate the, the rest of your point is well-taken. I mean, obviously, when Mr. Palermo was arrested, I believe in December of 2022, a year and a half, whatever, and I appreciate he wasn't removed till later, but that's what I was referencing. Obviously, that's a different type of conduct that we're talking about here. And I understand your point.
My point is, is that I tend to shrug that off when you say that, when it's not on point. However, we have individuals that when someone says something as a, as a point of a different way, and because they didn't walk the same mile of that person's shoes as the other, far too often, we take knee-jerk reactions and go so far as removing people from committees, meetings, without conflict resolutions. So I guess my question to you is, you took a legal oath to be equipped with all of these dynamics of various viewpoints. And we all know, especially when you are computer-minded, that when we went into the world of Windows, we know that we can journey to one destination eight different ways. And unfortunately, we're going to have conversations that are going to be taken eight, nine, 10, 15 different ways. So again, the wording of this proposed code of conduct is quite concerning. And unfortunately, it fringes on constitutional rights, it fringes on discrimination. I can go on and on, but I ask that the law department be cognizant of that, because this could very well move into a slippery slope.
And I have no doubt that Mr. Cousy, when he's here to address the code of conduct, which is the next item on the agenda, will, will address some of those questions. I don't think there's constitutional problems with the charter amendment. Again, I do appreciate your point, because I understand that that's, that's part of the point. That's not necessarily the entire point that you're trying to make. I do understand your point. We all have different backgrounds. We can all make presumptions about what other people do, what they've walked in their shoes. None of us truly know what other people are. We made, and I appreciate that's part of what you're saying. I understand that.
And that's why it's so crucial, before we arrive at a destination point of a decision about what happened during an interaction that we have time out on. point of a decision about what happened during an interaction that we have time out, one, two, we talk about those things. Not talking about those things and continuing to exclude is a form of discrimination. Now, with that being said, let's talk a little bit about the city and what mechanisms it has for code of conduct with city employees, which is different than elected official, and rightly so. But when a city employee talks down or disrespects a political official, what remedy is in place for us to address that?
Just like every, every city employee has bosses, there's a process, you can make a complaint, we have a department that investigates complaints, we obviously have collective bargain agreements, we've got chapter 23, we have city policy, we've got executive orders, all the create rules that apply to city employees. And I think part of the reason we're here is, is because none of those things apply to this, this particular elected body, but those things do apply. Now, I appreciate, if you make a complaint to the mayor about the actions of somebody, and I don't, I'm, I appreciate, you seem to be talking about some specific factual things, and I don't think that's, I'm, I'm not comfortable having those discussions relative to what this is, because this isn't supposed to be a specific factual thing. But if you have a complaint about actions of a specific employee, obviously, there's a mechanism, you can make that to the department director if it's a subordinate, to the mayor if it's a department director. They can do whatever investigation they feel, or direct whatever is important, talk to the human resources department about what's appropriate, there is a standard that's out there. And ultimately, though, somebody will make a determination as to whether or not they felt that contact violated the rules that are in place, and whether discipline's appropriate.
So if a complaint was made about behavior of a city employee to an elected official, how long would it take for an investigation to be complete? Would it take one day? Would it take a week? How, what's the typical turnaround time for an investigation? Would it include speaking to both parties? What would that look like?
Well, every investigation is different. So I can't tell you it's going to take a day, or a month, or six months. We have investigations that take several months. Part of it's, you make a complaint. If, if, for example, the interaction is videotaped, there may not be a need to interact with other people. If the conversation occurs someplace else, outside of where that is, you might interview witnesses. In some instances, we interview the complainant, in some instances, we don't. I mean, and I don't do the investigations generally, generally, the human resources department does, but I, I don't think it's a fair question to me, said, I want you to, to write me a little list and tell me it's going to be done in a day. I, I can't do that. Every investigation is different.
Have you ever seen an investigation done in one day?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've seen them takes, I've seen them take almost a year.
Oh, okay. So I'm in agreement with most of what I've heard before here today, that if we were to be honest, why are we having a code of conduct being looked at now, when we had a charter review committee in 2022 that looked at the charter? And things that needed to be reviewed should have been identified?
Certainly, items.
One, one recommendation was code of conduct, correct me if I'm wrong, code of ethics, correct terminology, code of ethics, and it was, that committee, that charter, was told to table that item, and we went on with some other things, right?
I, I don't recall a discussion about code of ethics. And as far as who's tabling it, please appreciate, the charter convention is the one that determines what goes forward or not. I, I don't know who would tell them to table it. I, it certainly would not be anybody in my department.
Okay. So we do agree that we did have a charter review in 2022?
Absolutely.
Where did this land in all of that? How come it didn't bubble up to the top?
I, I don't know the answer. The, the question, what was discussed by the charter convention, was generally things that were brought by department heads, some from the administration, from council members, there was another group that provided suggestions, and obviously, members of the public, and then a number of the charter amendments were self-initiated by the charter convention.
So you see the, the essence of why some of the comments that came forth, came forth, because we had a charter review two years ago, and this did not bubble up. So we still have not received an explanation as to why this is bubbling up now versus waiting until another charter review is to be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Just, Bernard, if you wouldn't mind, the, the charter review is, I mean, we're required to do that at least every 10 years.
Correct.
And, and, and the, and those, whatever comes out of the charter convention, we are to consider, or we can consider moving them forward or not.
Correct.
Any charter amendment, or a proposed amendment, can come at any time from any one of us, the mayor. It's not just from the charter convention that the, the amendments to the charter are to be considered. Those can come from a, a whole host of, of different evidence.
Correct. The position of, the position of the, the city attorney's office for 40 or 50 years is that, yes, charter amendments can be suggested by the mayor of the council. Americans suggest it, but by the way, in order for it to be put on the ballot, the council has to adopt an ordinance authorizing it to be placed on the ballot. So I mean, frankly, most of the charter amendments historically, that are not part of the charter convention, are probably initiated by the, the council itself.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear, too. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for you, too, Bernard. And I want to say, I appreciate the testimony today, and I, I think when you consider things like this, you do really have to walk around them and think about all the implications of something like this, and, and the next item, too. I happen to agree with the charter convention recommendation that a city council member should explicitly live in their district, if that's true, they've been voted to represent, and it's a little surprising that's not currently in our document. So I understand why they recommended that be added here. But there are circumstances, as Mr. Harding was identifying, that we maybe need to think about in that respect. I think what we've experienced with unexcused absences was too long. Three months' worth of unexcused absences is too long, in my opinion, and I think that was the clear majority of what I heard from South Omaha residents at the time, that three months was too long for unexcused absences. We do still have six months' worth of excused absences.
Correct.
And that has happened before, too.
It has.
For health reasons. But that would not be a topic under unexcused absences like that contemplates. As to the third part of this, which I think is the real, most of what we're hearing today, that was my follow-up question, too, was, if that particular provision under code of conduct is included in this charter amendment, and goes to voters, and if it's approved by voters, that does not obligate the council to pass a code of conduct?
It does not.
It means they could, but they don't have to, right?
Correct.
And then this is more, more for the next item, but that next item is the code of conduct, which is an ordinance, so that, in fact, would not have to be adopted if the council chose not to.
Correct.
Okay. And then one more question about timing. There is a timing concern with both of these charter amendments, or any charter amendment, in terms of consideration prior to going on the ballot. I believe that deadline, from the election commissioner, is September 1st.
Correct. You would have, you have to approve it at a council meeting prior to September 1st.
So that could be done on, on any of our next meetings, which are the 6th, the 20th, or the 27th?
Yeah. It's just, I think it was brought forward with knowing that if there was a one- or two-week layover, you could accommodate, accomplish that, accommodate that in your schedule, but any more than that, and then they would be foreclosed from being on the ballot this November.
Okay. So those two items today do have that deadline, if you will, to be considered.
Correct.
But the ordinance does not?
The, the ordinance does not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harding.
If it were, if it were not voted on until the 27th, and it needs to be to the, does the ordinance has, have to be in effect by the time it goes to the, the election commissioner? Or does it just need to be passed?
The position, the position we've taken is, it has to be adopted and signed by the mayor. And I, if the mayor would veto it, that would obviously potentially do it, but we, we have not, we've not implemented the 15-day period for implementation of ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any further lights on this item. Next item.
Item 51, an ordinance to men, chapter 2, article 2, division 1 of the Omaha Municipal Code, entitled, generally, by adding section 2-25 to provide for a code of conduct is communication opposition.
The public hearing on number 51 is today. We'll start with a brief presentation by Mr. Cousy.
Matt Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department. What the council has before today in this ordinance and agenda item number 51 is a code of conduct for city council members. I'll go through an overview of the code, and then I have a couple of comments to make due to some of the issues that were brought up, in an attempt to address those at the forefront. This code of conduct was developed by the law department with the, at the urging and at the request of the law committee to prepare a code of conduct for city council members. This code of conduct, the council has the inherent authority to make this code of conduct by virtue of two sections in the charter that are referenced in the ordinance 2.04 and 2.11 of the Omaha Municipal Charter, allows the code of conduct to be created by a city council and bind this council and future councils to this code of conduct. Specifically, it creates a code of conduct where, in terms of how council members have to conduct themselves, as Mr. Indambosh indicated, and I will reiterate again, all city employees who are not elected are bound by the HR policies, executive orders from the mayor, all of the human relations ordinances contained in chapter 23. That includes all the directors and the employees of those directors. Council members are excluded from those requirements. This would be an acknowledgement by the council that they will subject themselves to those HR policies. There is a list of official misconduct that is on there. Included in there is also an ability for council members to submit to the law department for advisory opinions on their actions. No code of conduct would be useful without some sort of enforcement mechanism. Considering all due process rights for council members, the law department created a system by which the enforcement of this code of conduct can be done, in terms of how complaints are made, how complaints are reviewed. And addressing one concern that I know has been raised, is the fact that the city, the complaints are made to the city attorney, and that the city attorney and the human resources director reviews initial complaints and makes an initial determination of whether the, should go forward or should not go forward. Both the city attorney and the human resources director, we are not elected. So there is a provision in this code whereby our decisions are then reviewed and validated by an elected official, that being either the council president or a committee composed of council members to review that. As you read on in the ordinance, there's a provision for how the enforcement is made. Five votes are required to do anything under this code of conduct. Five votes was not created at random, five votes represents a two-thirds majority of the council, and I will reference two-thirds majority in my closing remarks. But if five council members find that there has been a violation, there is a public hearing. At all times, the offending council member is allowed to plead his or her case, either in executive session or in open session. Much like the graduated sanctions that are located in our municipal code for graduated discipline that employer, that employers can impose on the employees, there's also a measure of graduated sanctions in here, censures, reprimands, calls for resignation, expulsion from the meeting, remove committee assignments, or other lawful action that the city council deems appropriate. It also takes into consideration whether an offense occurs during the meeting, and how that can be handled. This code of conduct is not unique to Omaha. Ms. Weston made reference to it in her remarks, that there are a multitude of cities that have enacted codes of conduct. I have repeated numerous times that the city of La Vista, in, in Nebraska, has had a code of conduct since 2004. Codes of conduct are becoming more common in the United States to address whatever needs that they feel that they need to address. The United States Senate and the United States House of Representatives have codes of conduct that have existed for quite some time. There has been a number of statements made about removal of an elected official, and how that is unconstitutional or uncalled for. The ability to remove an elected official for conduct has existed since the founding of the United States. It's embedded in the Constitution. Presidents can be impeached. Article 1, section 5 of the United States Constitution allows members of Congress, the House of Representatives, and the United States Senate to be removed by a two-thirds vote. The Nebraska Constitution, at article 3, section 10, allows for the expulsions of members of the legislature, again, by a two-thirds vote. The removal of an elected official because of offending conduct that rises to a level where they should be expelled, expelled because of it, is not unique. It has existed since 1789, when the Constitution was ratified, and has existed since the Nebraska Constitution was adopted. These concepts are not new, and they are not uncommon. The, there are some commonalities that you will find in codes of conduct throughout the United States. And I looked at ones, Texas, Kansas, California, Washington, Canada, even La Vista's code of conduct. There are some commonalities in what is included in them, in terms of what are the expectation for codes of conduct. This is a code of conduct that this council have adopted, that you would subject yourselves to, and that you subject future councils to, and how their behavior is governed. The council was provided with this code of conduct in draft form on Thursday, July 11th, both in electronic form and paper form, to give the council sufficient time to communicate with the law department, with any issues, or concerns, or adapt, or adoptions, or changes that any of them wanted to be made. With the exception of council member Harding, there were no communications to the law department from anybody on the council outside of the law committee on any of these issues. But that is why additional time was given to the council. So that was, July 11th was one week prior to this even appearing on the council's agenda for first reading the following Thursday, the 18th. I will remain, obviously, in my seat in the back to answer any questions that the council may have of me.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I am totally opposed to this, mainly because you're probably going to come through.
Larry, this is proponents. Are you in favor of this?
I'm a proponent, yes.
You're in favor?
Yes, I'm a proponent.
You just said you're opposed.
I'd like to speak, well, as to why, if you'll let me.
Okay.
Please, this is my time, I think.
Making it clear.
The reason I want to be a proponent is I want the citizens to find out how ridiculous and unconstitutional this is. Mr. Constitution up there, by, by the way, did you not hear the Declaration of Independence? Okay? Back at the time that those things started, there was a king that had rules and codes of conduct, that if he didn't like it, off with a head. You know what? The citizens decided that the king's code of conduct wasn't necessarily good, and they decided the king needed to go. So you're citing lawfare out of lawyer's dictionaries, and you're not talking with the people that you should be talking with, that are telling you, we don't want you guys making the code of conducts for our candidates, whether they be the mayor, the governor, the president, or one of these little seven Indians here that vote against us. Supermajority, whatever you want to call it. That's not supposed to be your prerogative. I'm supposed to be able to vote her in and out, and I would vote her in and out on the basis that she's been reading for two hours instead of listening? Code of conduct? You can have that vote right today, not listening to your constituents. Code of conduct? Thank you.
Any other proponents, those in favor? Seeing none, any opponents?
Luis Humans, 2709 Dewey Avenue. First off, I want to thank Mr. Harding. Louis Humanage, 2709 Dewey Avenue. First off, I want to thank Mr. Harding for making a point of order. I appreciate clarifications I think you guys should be doing more often. I think the council should be helping and holding the president accountable more often for the proceedings. You know, you, you do a point of order for if there's confusion or if you want to reorientate the meeting. I think that's appropriate. So thank you, Mr. Harding. So the point I want to make about democracy is that a council member being removed or, you know, pass away does not inhibit their district to send a council member again. The, just because somebody is removed doesn't mean that the people can't send a representative again. So democracy will prevail even if a council member is removed or passes away. And just want to be clear that you will want to have this come here because of individual council members. Think that's the appropriate thing to say. Because there is a difference between a special session of the council and a committee meeting of members of the council. Rule, the code of conduct, I believe, and I think, I hope you will hear me out again about this, shouldn't be on the city charter or shouldn't be in the codes. It should be stated that there is a rule, there's a code of conduct, conduct in your rules of order, and then have a separate document from that that lists the code of conduct. And you can do that at a regular session of the council, or you can do it every two years when you approve your rules of order. You don't need to go through all these processes and be like, "Oh, my goodness. What are we going to include in the code of conduct?" One session, you can have a code of conduct. Another session, you just drop the whole thing. It's your prerogative. So I, I, so I'll close with this, that I remain with the idea that you don't need to be explicit about why you want to remove one of the council members. You have a vote. The motion of no confidence is the reasoning to remove a council member, and then you vote on it if, if you want to go ahead with the motion or not. Oh, and then one last point. I agree with the comments with, about the code of conduct. It's like, what should be in the code of conduct as, and who is pushing for the particulars? I don't think that the city attorney or the human resources, resources director should be the ones to take into consideration your conduct. It's none of their business. I think the responsible, the responsibility lies with individual council, council members. I think you, you can take an issue to a committee, send it to a committee and say, "Okay, can you review this conduct?" and then bring it back to the council. It needs to stay within the format of council meetings. Okay, thank you.
Other opponents?
Thank you again. Anthony Carifa Rogers, Wright, 310 Lincoln Boulevard. I would just start by saying with due respect to the city attorney, I, I think it was pretty tone deaf to evoke the ability to impeach the president when a rogue and renegade Supreme Court with a lower approval rating than former Cornhusker football coach Scott Frost just granted presidential impunity. So I, I don't think that that was a very, very good example. But I would like to start to say that I have no doubts that there's universal consensus that the fair and professional treatment of our city employees must be enacted and, and maintained. Heaven knows, based on the fact that we're even giving this ordinance the time of day, it's clear that city employers are working much harder to serve the people than the people's government and its elected officials. That said, what this ordinance does is pave a pathway to rapid escalation in lieu of proactive mediation. Are we the people really to believe that adults whose primary duty it is to serve the people of this city cannot resolve differences without immediately resorting to lawsuits? I'm gravely concerned that this proposal is aimed at a specific city council member rather than aimed at improving relationships between city council members and city employees and fostering greater efficacy and efficiency to address the myriad challenges facing the city. And yes, given the fact that this city council member in question is a black woman, my concerns are visceral, personal, and very further warranted. Members of the city council, Mr. President, while the city paid a sum of $131,725 to the National League of Cities to, in the words of Mayor Stothart, quote, "Develop consistency in how we work to expand a culture of inclusion in the city," this proposed ordinance elucidates the fact that a couple of trainings cannot eviscerate a lifetime of learned implicit biases that are ensconced in myriad sectors of our nation, including but not limited politically, education, entertainment, and environment. As we say in my homeland, Sierra Leone, it is harder to empty a cup than it is to fill it. That all to say, the plain language of the ordinance as written is littered with ambiguity that could engender a season of implicit bias. For instance, sections 2-25D1 and 2-25D2 read, "Respectably and in part, council members will treat each other, city council staff, and city employees with respect, and stipulates that city council members shall avoid language that explicitly or wait for it implicitly threatens physical harm." Councilmember Begley, due respect, you of all people should know about the pitfalls of implicit bias because, if I can get my thing to work here. Yeah, I will take my time. I don't know what's going on. There we go. Councilmember Begley, the pitfalls of implicit bias because you, it became a profound component of your run for the office that you now hold when the Omaha Police Officers Association, on your behalf, sent a repugnant, racist, and reprehensible flyer establishing a feckless necklace, nexus between your then opponent, a black woman, and riots and crime. This act was more deliberate than the Democratic Party setting up Joe Biden to fail during the June 27th presidential debate, and many of us believe that this proposed ordinance is equally deliberate. Ironically, the ordinance is written in section 2-25D4H and 2-25D4I establishes interdiction for creating a hostile work environment in retaliation against city employees. But that's exactly what this proposal will do. This estimable body will be reduced to a circumference of pubescent volatility, taking up more of your time to go after one another rather than coming together to work for the most needs of the people: poverty, climate change, environmental racism, anemic trust between city residents and law enforcement, and an OPS school system that is under the threat of takeover by the state. Even the process of determining if comeuppance is necessary is perniciously proximate to an evisceration of true and transparent due process that will further reduce the people's government to a proverbial kangaroo court. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I'll close by saying if you allow this to go through, you are exposing yourselves as incapable of navigating conflict. And if you can't navigate conflict, how and why should the people provide you with the largesse of our sacred trust to navigate the very real problems needing solving yesterday? And in the process of exposing yourselves and reducing the people's trust, it could have the effect of increased voter torpidity at a time when we need more civic engagement than ever. Thank you, and please do much, much better.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
Hello again. I am Dorothy Johnson. I live at 2603 North 32nd Street in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm born, raised, and currently residing in North Omaha, District 2, to be exact. And I am here to passionately oppose this item on your agenda. I do believe it is very oppressive, and I respect to the city attorney, but we shouldn't be trying to mimic historic structures in this nation, the city, this state, because although other folks have codes of conduct, there are a lot of rules, there are a lot of laws that we should not try to mimic. So I think that absolutely fell short. I believe this is oppressive in nature. I do believe it is demeaning in nature, and I do believe that this is wrong. There are so many ways that we can choose to enact change, and I believe this is an inappropriate one. I believe it is scapegoating. I believe it is targeting, and I believe it is offensive. I'm an African American woman, and so is my councilwoman, and I could feel her being choked up as she was talking about her experience. So I understand that there are some protections that are being put into place to protect employees, but my question is, who protects my councilwoman? Who mentors my councilwoman? Who calls her after these meetings and asks her if she's okay? If you all can't do that, I will do a better job of that, and that's my promise to you. But I want you all to know is, we can read, and we can read between the lines on this specific item on the agenda. We all understand the undertones and the tempers to this item. It is not lost on us. And when you all vote for this or against this or whatever have you, we will know and understand where you stand on these issues. It is not lost on us at all. So just wanted to stand up here and passionately oppose, also vocally and passionately support my councilwoman, and if there's anything I can do for you, please let me know. But today I stand here to be present for you and let you know that you have done an excellent job. Of course, none of these roles are easy, but my question is, how do they pour into you? How do they support you as not only a woman, but also a woman of color, standing up there as one chocolate drop in a sea of sameness? I support you. I do not support this item on the agenda. I think a code of conduct, if it's not culturally revised and reviewed, it is not sound. If it's not reflective, if it's not ran by some, if it's not ran by the ACLU, NAACP, the African American Affairs, Commission on Affairs, if you didn't run it by us, you cannot invoke it on us. If it's not culturally sound or culturally sensitive, that means it is oppressive in nature. If you didn't intentionally try to disrupt the oppressive nature of that document, that means you're okay with it staying in. So again, I am here, and I'll be here next meeting as well, to be sure that someone is here to support my councilwoman. But above that, that's all. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next opponent.
Clearly, I'm an opponent of all y'all, so, because y'all got my letter last week, I'm sure. My name is Sherman Wells. My address, 4718 Kansas Avenue. But today, y'all might as well call me Larry, because if I had a MAGA hat, I'd be wearing one right now. But this tactical ADA hat is close enough. It's sad that we are here in 2024 to talk about the government using the law to silence the voice of people. This is modern-day Jim Crow. Look at y'all faces. It's disgusting. What's wrong with you, passive Pete? You can't manage your own council? That you gotta go and create a law? What's the point of you being the president if you can't have order amongst your own peers without making it a law? Because Dave and the mayor don't like the way Dave is spoken to back there? We talking about a mayor who had issues with firefighter president Steve Leclerc because of his endorsement, endorsement of Heath Mello in 2017 for a mayor, so much so that she botched a case against Steve Leclerc when he elbowed a black woman in the back two years ago? And she was so upset about the endorsement that she leaked information that should have went straight to the police, to the media, which caused that black woman to not get no justice because the mayor trying to use her political position to get back at somebody that did something to her two years prior. She spent millions of dollars, city dollars, defending her blunder. Anyway, if you think it's okay for Dave to sit up and ignore questions asked to him, so much so, if you watch the video, Pete and Dave both looked at Dave, Pete and Don, Ro, both looked at Dave when she asked the question, and neither one of y'all said, "Hey, is you gonna answer the question?" He just sat back there in his arrogant self. And it's pitiful because they both knew who the question was addressed to. And like I've told you before, if I gotta keep addressing this council, it's gonna be disrespectful. Why? Because you don't show no respect to the people that vote for you. Y'all sit up here and y'all bicker over stupid petty stuff that y'all wanna have your political friendships over and not what the people is telling you. And it's been brought to me numerous times that I should run for District 2 city council seat. And if I ran, I would win by landslide. Trust and believe that. Because I do more for my people in my district than any of y'all do for any of y'all districts. Let's get that right. But I don't think I would be able to stomach being around y'all every day, not even once a week on a Tuesday, because here y'all are wasting people's time and money to make a vote on your in-house fighting, failing to address issues and things that people are actually concerned about, like the unhealthy living conditions in OHA. But that's another topic. And now that faded Ben Gray lost his reelection to District 2, and this so-called Law Committee, now y'all want to address and pass a law, talking about an issue from February, although it's been five months, we still have not forgotten. And I'll end it with this. This meeting with city council is like being a part of OPS in the sixth grade with a code of conduct. It's a realistic exposure of why every single one of y'all's seats need to be replaced by people who remember that your job is to work for people in the district, not to solve your petty house bickering and voting on things that's in favor of your political friendships and relationships. Because I've talked to each and every one of y'all about the unfair treatment that we've been receiving in this town, and none of y'all replied. And yet, here we are. With me being banned from OHA, my sister has relapsed on drugs because I have not been able to be there for her because y'all won't step in and tell Joni she wrong for making up lies against me, which I got caught for tomorrow. Tired of y'all. All of y'all.
Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Well, as I, my name is Ford Momarts Brown, 1511 Farnham. As I was going to say earlier, the opponents persuaded me that maybe the code of conduct was not such a good idea in its entirety. I still think a code of conduct is needed. However, in reskimming it, I did not notice the term ethics anywhere in there. What's the point of a code of conduct that isn't based on ethics? And I really think those need to be put into the, the code of conduct, any code of conduct, but also behavior of, in a democratic manner, towards your constituents, towards everybody's constituents, a willingness to listen to them, a willingness to hold town council meetings. These are things that are needed, but also to clear up and have respectful council members and other city employees. But if they did bring up a valid point of removing somebody and then having that district sit vacant, people who elect those members, if they're removed, should be able to be represented. And what I would suggest is that the code, code of conduct be amended in such a way that if someone is removed, immediately that district goes up for another election at the next election, and a scramble for whatever to get enough signatures to put them on there or for arrangements to be made for people to be put on the ballot to be elected in the next election, whether that be primary, general, special, whatever, so that people don't go, in their districts, don't go unrepresented. That is your primary responsibility, is to represent all the constituency. And that's, that's the one big suggestion I would make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Joe Fox, 461 Harmon Avenue.
Joe Fox, 461 Harmon Avenue, President of the East Omaha Neighborhood Association. This code of conduct, as it was read by Koozie and by that young gentleman here, referenced a lot of stuff in here, which I thought should've been read word for word. If we're here to represent and maybe pass this code, why wouldn't you read that word for word into this microphone to the people present, let alone the people of the city of Omaha? Through my recent endeavors and the worry of losing my house to eminent domain and the hammer of the city, I have become a representative of many other people outside of my town, outside of my neighborhood, and outside of my city. Because I've had to help them, like, oh, that's what they're trying to do to us too. And this, for people to say, oh, they have this in other areas. Well, does it work there? Does it? Omaha, Nebraska is, it's a gem. It's the middle of the map. It is the most cultural, diverse city known to man. Statistically, break that down if you want to. But as a resident, as a, I was born in Omaha, Nebraska, at University Hospital. I've lived in northeast, southwest, little bit of La Vista, lived there before. I've lived everywhere, okay? I'm a pub, I'm a person of this public school system, which, by the grace of God, we found our way. You know, I mean, there's a lot of people get left behind in this system if they don't know what they're doing and how to react. So I graduated from Omaha North. I live in District Two. I'm represented by the District Two representative, and I would, it would be a nightmare if my representative, or wherever I lived, wasn't in tune with its people like she was and has been when the city came, when the, this plan put forward by OEDC in Burlington that was long-held by the city come forward. If I didn't have that representation at that time, who knows where I'd been? And that's what I would expect of everybody and anybody standing on here. And throughout this thing, I've communicated with the other people, and I've got maybe one email back, tops. I call Juanita Johnson on her phone. She answers, or she texts me, said, I take my lunch break at this time, and I'll call you. Okay? And that's how a council member should protect and represent its people. I agree with it. You creating this law is exposing yourself of not being able to navigate conflict and not being able to express your feelings. And I want to, this might be a little bit of an opinion, but one of it's, go to the top, be D4, D4H, creating a hostile work environment. The citizens of this city don't hold these chairs, don't work in this, but the hostile work environment, that's, if that's what you think happened there was crazy, in construction or in food service or wherever you, a hostile work environment is, is an explanation of being soft or what have you. But I kinda wanna move forward to this, is what I read, and this is, you know, if, which I hope, and I'm very opposition of this code of conduct being passed, the power it would hold, and it would be, one of them's, an expulsion from the meeting, just kick you right out, because you had a little bit too emotion and stuff like that, or maybe even suspended from the next meeting, where there could be a very, very important something on the docket, and not be able to be represented, represented correctly, like I have been represented recently, to think that that wouldn't be able, it would ruin everything I've been working for, which is to save my home. Then it goes on to be, you can actually, the council president or other members shall call for a vote on the, if supported by five votes, the offending council member can be publicly reprimanded, publicly censored, or expelled from the meeting. What are we doing here? I don't, I know what I'm doing here. I'm speaking for the people that I am. I'm human. We're all human. I've said it before. Underneath those threads of those nice clothes that were made by a human, most likely not a machine, as nice as they look, you are human. And if you can't resolve conflict amongst your human selves, and you have to bury somebody in paperwork, and take the voice from the citizens who are the people that want represented by you, it's, it's confusing. I don't know. I think this code of conduct, I come up with this, and it might not fit correctly, but, and it's weird that you guys were gonna come up with this to conduct yourselves in a better manner. It's, so it's like, I'm gonna make up the rules on who and how they can play this game after the game has already started, and that's not fair. I'm gonna make up the rules on who and how people are gonna play this game after the game has already started, the contest, the game, the, the race, whatever it may be. The rules are being changed, and it's, what's happening is that, like I said, you're taking this from the people, you're trying to use your power to control this code of conduct and these complaints and everything like that, and it's, it's confusing on why time's being wasted on this and not other things. I don't think the code of conduct should be created by the council at all. Why would, why would an entity be able to self-govern themselves? That is a recipe for disaster, all because people's feelings got hurt. This seems very dramatic, and to use this Vinnie Palermo thing as like the reason why we're going through this, that was a while ago, should've been handled in 2022, and it was not, and now it is, and now it's being dubbed the Vinnie Palermo Code of Conduct. I've seen how you guys act and how others act when she speaks, and it's, it's crazy, because I've seen her do the very similar thing, is when maybe she excuse, she choose herself from the bench, when some of the people are talking, and she was called out by like the moderator and stuff. And since I've been here, three people have done it. I mean, last meeting I was here, Don Rowe voted from, he was over there, he voted. Yep. And I don't, you know, I don't know, get into that, but it seems like she has to walk on eggshells around you guys, and now there's been this put in place to where even more so. I don't, I don't know. There's seven humans up here representing, what is it, 1.3 million people? I don't know how many people are in this city right now. And for five of those people, be able to say that something's wrong with one, it doesn't make any sense. There's 1.3 million people in this city? Let us decide who represents us. Please, and thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
I'm gonna try to get this right one time.
Make sure you push it all the way up, so it's, yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. All the times I get here and I, okay. The pot calling the kiddo black. I wanted to put that up because...
Sorry.
Cheryl Weston, 24th, South 13th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am definitely opposed to this ordinance, and opposed to the way it was put together. And this, this is, as I said before, you're setting a precedent. You're setting a precedent for future city council people. You're setting something in front of the people who voted to hear, and I'm, everything I'm gonna do in my power, I'm gonna do everything in my power to remind people come next year to vote who you are and what you did. If this should pass, it needs to have time set back. Mr. Kuzic, who said that this was communicated to July 8th, on July 8th or thereabout, 2024, and he only had one response, one response, from an individual on the city council regarding this. What does that say? The other thing that has been brought out, I think, if this is such a needed thing for this council, of people that we elected, human beings, then why didn't you have a town hall meeting, each one of you in your district or for the whole city, to let people know what you are attempting to do? As it's been said before, seven people, this is like we're in school, folks. You're supposed to be adults, and you can't handle this debate between yourselves? I'm standing here not just because what I have said earlier, I feel that this is really about, not because it's in my district, or because it's my district council person. I would stand here and say this about this particular issue, no matter if it was in your district, Mr. Rowe, or your district, Mr. Harding, or your district, Ms. Melton, any of you. Because this is wrong, absolutely wrong. As Mr. Kuzic had said, he had searched, researched different counties or cities who have this, and I agree, I researched as well. But it doesn't make it have to be necessary for here in Omaha, Nebraska, as I stated earlier. In this, in Section 225, the citizens of city, the citizens of the city of Omaha are entitled to have a fair, ethical, and accountable local government. The purpose of this code of conduct is to establish ethical standards of conduct for members of the city council, to ensure that the members act appropriately and to establish a process to determine whether a council member has committed misconduct. Right there from the get-go, you know it's wrong, because you can't take, evidently you've shown you can't investigate, you can't handle your own conflict. If you were going to have this, why shouldn't there be an oversight committee outside an adversary, adversity and diversity committee to look at this? Elected officials are supposed to be bound to carry out and implement the laws of the United States of Nebraska and the city of Omaha. Let's break this down. This is your code that you put here. Councilmen's will treat each other, city staff and city employees, and the public with respect, and shall refrain from derogatory or harassing remarks. Councilman's members should avoid profanity, personal attacks, verbal abuse, or language, and you should have in here body actions? The rolling of eyes, the snickering? All of that should be in here? Threatens personal harm. The council is committed to fostering a safe and productive work environment, which includes treating others with respect. You went on to say, the city of Omaha resource policies. And then exactly in 4A, the first thing you say is discrimination. That's too brief. That's too vague. Discrimination is entirely different to everybody. But if the city of Omaha resource policies have that in place, then why don't you identify? Why don't you say discrimination based upon the city of Omaha's human policy remarks? B, nepotism, we all know what that is, and going down. Here's where I have a problem again, on E, use or disclosure of confidential information. What is confidential information or disclosure? Are each of you told when you have a meeting, this is confidential for the city? You cannot divulge that. I understand in executive, I was in corporate role for many years, probably more than I like to say. But anyway, when we had something in executive session, we knew. When we had a confidential meeting, we knew, and we abide by that. I think, look at all of you, seven, you're business people, you're professional people. You should know that, shouldn't have to be. But it's not even spelled out. What is considered to be disclosure or confidential information? Creating a hostile work environment. Hostile. Spell out that definition, because what may be hostile to you, Councilman Rowe, may not be hostile to Councilwoman Melton, Councilwoman Melton, sorry about that. But there's no definition to show. Hostile work environment, that's vague. All of this is so vague that you put in here, and you know what? This seems to be, this wasn't just a yesterday or a July 11th. This has been on your minds, certain ones, for some time. So why didn't you get it earlier to the people? Why didn't you bring this out early, so you're not rushing this through? Retaliation against city employees. That's what this is. This is retaliation. Same way they do, as this gentleman said in OHA, which you are knowledgeable about, this is retaliation. I wanna talk to you again, when you take and get down to the advisory opinions. You talk about that in a code. When you look at, efforts will be made to protect the identity of the complaint. What about the, the efforts to, to protect the city council person that this is being There is no way that you can individually, and that is a problem not only with city council, it's in anywhere else, the police department and other departments, you cannot, our Supreme Court has shown that, that you cannot handle investigating yourselves. And then you go on, and it says, if this is brought to the person who is being, the complaint is against, they have to get an attorney paid for. Well, if you're doing this, the city, and we're paying your side, pay for that attorney to represent that individual. Conduct a preliminary investigation by the city president or an assigned committee of the city council, may be overruled in finding and require city attorney and human rights resources director to continue with the process. This goes back and shouldn't even be there, because it goes back to the very thing in the charter. The city council president, whomever they may be, are the ones that should be able to direct and control the city council members and their behavior, and how they represent themselves to the public. In Item 7, a violation is found by a vote of five council members. Formal resolution of public censure. I mean, let's put this person down, drag them all the way down, because you put it out public after the fact, not before. Formal resolution of a reprimand. Formal resolution of a call for resignation. How dare you take it on that you can call for this person's resignation when it wasn't you who put them there? Expulsion from the meeting. If you have an expulsion from the meeting, how is that district person going to communicate whatever was taken on in that committee meeting to their constituents? You all, well, no, I take that back. You didn't all claim, but certain individuals have claimed, oh my God, District Four, they went months without having representation. What do you think it does if you take and expel our representative from your committee meeting? It's no different. We don't get representation. When you look at this, as it said, and many have said behind, before me, what is wrong? Have we become such a society that we cannot help each other to work out our differences? Isn't that why we have a seven, to be diverse, to work out the differences, the conflict? I put up here, and I wanted to say, because my grandmother used to tell me this all the time. And my grandmother only had a sixth-grade education, but she taught herself how to, and this is this dang new phone, I don't know, I'm gonna turn it off, trying. I think it's mine. Maybe it's somebody else's, I don't know. But anyway, my grandmother had a sixth-grade education. She was a domesticated worker. She became a foster parent, but she used to have these things, which I always call now, when I was doing training in my former career as CS. And for those who might not know, CS is called common sense. So she would give me all these little tidbits, and I would use those. And one of them, she said, beware of the pot calling the kiddo black. You don't have to go look it up. It's an old cliche, because I got it on the screen for you. The pot calling the kiddo black. And that's what I see here. But more important, I see a seven individuals not being able to come together and work something out for the betterment of the people you were set here to represent. And you all know, as the one lady said... And you all know, as the one lady said, we're very capable of understanding, we're very capable of reading, we're very capable of understanding and reading between the lines, and I am truly disappointed in several of you. I truly am. I'm not going to say, because that would be falling into the same characteristics as some of you are in this particular ordinance, but I'm disappointed in you. And I also want to leave, as I said before, I wouldn't be standing here just because this happens to be what we feel is something against our particular elected official. I would do it for anybody, because I know it's wrong. And one of the things Martin Luther King Jr. used to say, when you know something is wrong, you should stand, because if you fall for it, you will fall for anything.
Thank you. Any other opponents that have not spoken yet?
I'll make it real quick. I'm just sitting, watching the reaction and accusations and the negative rhetoric, and I'm disappointed in all of us in that we have to do that. I ask that you do not pass this and that we find some resolution and conversation before we create a wedge. And we've got to be more inclusive with people. All of us come from a different perspective. All of us were raised differently, but I think we need to come together as a city, a nation, a state, and work together. And I don't think passing this achieves that, because I know that Councilman... Councilwoman Johnson feels that this is targeted at her. I would hope that that's not the intent of this. So why don't we prove it to everyone that we're going to do the right thing?
Thank you. Any other opponents that haven't spoken yet? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized. Oh. One more. Come on down.
All right. Hi, I'm Nicole Leclerc. I live down the road in Bellevue. I usually don't come to city council.
I just need your address, though.
Oh, okay. 1802 Brenda Drive, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68005. I'm usually busy at the... Sorry, I ran here. At the Douglas County Commissioner meetings. Never went to a meeting before six years ago. I've continued to come. I went to save a building, and the building was saved because the person sued the county. And I'm very concerned looking at this, that this is similar to what's going on with the Juvenile Justice Center and the mess that that is now. An empty building for almost a year, $20,000 a year to pay for that. And many people came to fight that and say all the things that are now happening, but what's happening over there is even worse than how we thought it might be, with the waste and no families and children being helped. Some of you are on the building commission that we spoke to about it. So I just caution you, because there was one person on that board who has consistently gone against that plan, and I don't think it's been comfortable for that person. And if what you're trying to do today would happen there, we need to have voices of people that you do not agree with, and we need to see leaders up there hearing each other in the world we're in that is so divisive right now. We need to see our leaders able to hear each other and still talk to each other afterwards and not block each other because we don't like what they're saying. And I am very concerned for Councilmember Johnson, watching a few of these meetings with what is about to occur and is occurring with the millions of dollars now going into that part of town, a part of town that has been severely neglected. And all of a sudden, there's so much interest because of the money going in there. So I just hope that you will reconsider this and just allow people to speak through their representatives and not be afraid of that, because I really feel like even what has happened there could still be better if people will listen to each other and admit, okay, maybe we can rethink this, because by the way, that's having to be rethought. So I caution you to just slow down, you know, think about all the people that Councilmember Juanita Johnson is representing, who have not had a voice for how long? Let them have their voice. Please do not be afraid of that. Our city is great, but it can be so much greater if we listen to each other. And I will say, going to all these meetings, I've met such wonderful people and in the community, not the leaders always, but I just encourage you, your people, too, beyond just leaders. So just slow down, and thank you for letting me speak and catch my breath. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, I believe your light was on?
I'll save my comments for our next meeting.
Okay. I don't see any further lights today. Madam Clerk.
Non-action items, items 52 through 59 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:36.
Thank you.[1549.33]